Good afternoon, everyone. Start off with member Carlos Alcedo.
Present.
Member Florencio Breones.
Present.
Our member Qui Wynn is absent today. Member Estela Torres Segres.
Present.
And our Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to have all trustees please speak into the mic so that the people that are watching virtually can hear all the comments. That's something that I always get told that you can't hear some of the board members speaking because we get very comfortable and put our mouth away from the microphone. So a reminder, please speak into the microphone. Item number two is closed session. If we can get legal counsel, Olivares Madruga, to please read that for us.
Thank you. Closed session items tonight are as follows. Item A is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8: consultation with real property negotiators for the property located at 4105 Rosemead Boulevard in Rosemead, California. Are any public comments?
None at this time.
Okay, hearing no public comment, we will, the board will now move into closed session and we will be back out at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and start the board meeting today, Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. Welcome to the Almani Union High School District Board of Trustees regular meeting. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item B. We just returned from closed session. Item number one, open session, which I just did, and can we get a roll call? Superintendent Dr. Edward Zuniga?
Yeah, thank you, and good evening, everyone. We'll start off with member Carlos Alcedo.
Present.
Member Florencio Breones.
Present.
Member Qui Nguyen is absent. Member Estela Torres De Seigres.
Pacing.
And member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Thank you. And also student board member Ruben Carrasco.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. At this time, we'll go ahead and do the flag salute. If you can please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get an approval or a motion to approve tonight's agenda? I have a motion by Professor Torres de Seigres.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Breones. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at this time, I'd like to start off with a poem. Those of you who know, who come to our board meetings regularly, know that I always start off with a poem, and I do that in honor of my colleague, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres. That was something that I learned from her when she was president years back, and I consider myself to be a student of hers. She's been a great mentor to me. And Professor Torres de Seigres is the most seasoned board member on this board. She also has the most life experience, and she also has the highest level of education of any trustee here. So when Professor Estela Torres de Seigres speaks, I listen. And so again, in your honor, and something that I learned from you, Professor Torres de Seigres, I'd like to read this poem. And this poem is written by a lady by the name of Lillian G. Katz that was born in 1932, and she was with us until 2022. And she's a professor at, was a professor at the University of Illinois, and she is a, an early childhood education instructor, professor at the University of Illinois. She was also a preschool teacher and conducted many teacher training programs for many educators. She also wrote tons of articles and authored and co-authored hundreds of publications that talked about children. And she's also a graduate of Woodrow Wilson High School here in Los Angeles, and it was back in 1950, but Woodrow Wilson High School is very popular around here. She also attended Whittier College, and so there's a local connection here to the Southern California area. But this is the poem, and it really speaks to me, and there have been times, I know that June is coming, and each one of us will accept the graduating class for one of our comprehensive high schools. And I've read this at some of the graduations because I believe that it is so powerful. And the poem goes as follows. Again, this is Professor Lillian Katz. And again, Professor Torres de Seigres, thank you for being a great role model for me. I appreciate it. And I quote from Professor Lillian Katz, "Each of us must come to care about everyone else's children. We must recognize that the welfare of our own children and grandchildren is intimately linked to the welfare of all other people's children. After all, when one of our children needs life-saving surgery, someone else's child will perform it. If one of our children is threatened or harmed by violence, someone else's child will be responsible for the violent act. The good life for our own children can be secured only if a good life is also secured for all other people's children." Again, that is a special poem from Ms. Lillian Katz, and I'd like to, again, honor Professor Torres de Seigres for always starting off the meeting with some type of poem that we can think about, especially what has been going on here in our school district with violence, and also as well, like in Nashville, Tennessee, where the lives of innocent children and innocent adults were taken because of this violence. And I'd like to give about a minute of silence just to those poor children and poor educators that didn't know that somebody was gonna come storming in with a machine gun and shooting down the glass at a school and not knowing that they would not come home to their parents or to their loved ones. And can we please honor them in a minute of silence, please? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Again, thank you for being here tonight. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and move on to, if you're following on the agenda, we're in section B, number two. Consider approval of Board of Trustees meeting minutes for March 1st, regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by board member, Mr. Florencio Breones, seconded by board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Item number three, consider approval of Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees meeting minutes for March 15, 2023, special board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Padilla, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay.
Or a correction. In the March 15 meeting minutes, under Board Communication, under my section, bullet number three, it says UCLA Alumni Association, and that should read USC Alumni Association.
Okay, so going ahead and, number three, approving the minutes of the special meeting of March 15, 2023, with the amended university name being changed from UCLA to USC. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by board member, Mr. Florencio Breones. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by a school board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Moving on to B four, recognition of South Almani High School Academic Decathlon Team. Dr. Edward Zuniga?
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, again. It's our pleasure to do our recognition of some of our students this evening. We're gonna start off with the Academic Decathlon Team from South Almani High School. It's not only a pleasure to honor these kids, but also rewarding to see the fruits of our labor of the teachers and the coaches and everyone who has supported the Academic Decathlon Team, including the Board of Trustees, as they not only competed successfully in the county competition, but also made some history at the state level, and just extremely excited to honor those individuals today. I also want to recognize an individual who has led them. That is our coach and our educator, Mario Lopez. He's not only the actual Academic Decathlon coach and teacher, but he's also our mathematics teacher. I have a list of items he also does during the school day, too. He also is the boys volleyball head coach and the Class of 2026 class advisor. Mr. Lopez, are you out in the crowd? If you can make your way over here. Congratulations on a remarkable run. Extremely, extremely impressed and proud just of your leadership and how you demonstrated Extremely, extremely impressed and proud just of your leadership and how you demonstrate, and really a great mentor for these kids, whether you're presenting, whether, you know, just talking, whether you're coaching, everything that I observed, just superb and just outstanding educator that we're all proud of. I could say the achievements that were completed, but I would prefer that you highlight some of those accomplishments, both at the county and also at the state level, if you may.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, board. Good evening. So as Dr. Zuniga was mentioning, I am active in the school. I am the math teacher, volleyball coach, and also the Academic Decathlon coach. But also, I am a product of the school. I went to South Almani High School, and I graduated in 2013. So I had lots of mentors, and one of them was Mr. Oscar Castillo, who I would like to thank because he took me under his wing. The Academic Decathlon group started with him five years ago, and it started with him taking Rookie of, Rookie School of the Year, and it was a huge success. And I'm proud of these kids because we got all the way to this level. In the Los Angeles County Competition, we got first place in Division II. We were 10th place overall out of 60 schools in Los Angeles County, and we got 28 individual medals. This was the first year all of the students that were competing got a medal, and I was really proud for them on that. We did so good, we were invited to the California State Competition, which only has happened three times. Rosebean has done it twice, and now we've done it once. So it was school history for us. And at that competition, we placed third in Division, no, we placed seventh place in Division III. We were 44th, the 44th school out of 60 schools, and we got nine individual medals and one milestone medal for, for the team. And I, I was just very proud of them because they not only get to experience a high level of academics, but it's an experience for them that they will never forget, and it's something I would never forget as well. They did so good. Only a few, only three schools will be competing in the national championship for Academic Decathlon. We were not one of the three schools, but that's okay. We were invited to compete in the national online individual competition, which is the first time in this district's history where we are doing that, competing nationally in Academic Decathlon. So I would just like to say thank you to my students. Thank you, guys, for competing so great. And I definitely thank you, Dr. Morales. You had enough trust for me to take over Academic Decathlon. And not just that, thank you for, for the district for hiring me two years ago. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The feeling mutual of you being part of the district and returning back to your home, it's a very proud moment, not only for you, but also for us, too. Congratulations. I want to bring up our principal, Dr. Jorge Morales, also just to highlight some of the school accomplishments and what this means to the school and having the Academic Decathlon not only be successful this year, but really just the pride that it brought to the school. Dr. Morales.
Good evening, everybody, again. Welcome. Today, we do celebrate, of course, South Almani's excellent success stories. Our Academa team comprised of many of the students that are here in attendance today have put in the interest and the efforts to sign up for the class led by Mr. Lopez. The beautiful part, again, of our district is that we do see many of our students flourish and go on and become different makers in different sectors of our nation's economy. But what I got a chance to see was Mr. Lopez come back while he was going through his credential program, and we brought him into South Almani High School to be the mathematics tutor. At that point in time, of course, that's a scouting report. You do see the, the excellence that he has, the potential that he has, and right now it's being realized as we speak here tonight. So, Mr. Lopez, thank you again for leading the students forward. To our student Academa members as well for joining the club and applying themselves, not only here regionally with the LA County's success, but also their experience to go up north. And one joy that I was able to see is that our board member, student board member, Ruben, I joked with Ruben, I said, "Ruben, you hosted the entire team at your house," which means that they were able to all come together and study at Stanford in preparation for that Saturday event. So again, it just goes everywhere together. So thank you very much, Dr. Zuniga, board membership, for bringing them up today to be recognized due to their, their, their success stories. So thank you, guys.
At this time, we're gonna have our board members come down, and we'll go ahead and present certificates. Each student, as well as a coach, will receive a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Almani Union Board of Trustees, along with a district pin to wear proudly, and also just as a memory of today's event. So again, welcome to. Welcome again to the entire public, Mr. Ricardo Padilla, board president. And first, I'd like to call up Mr. Mario Lopez. Come on up here. It all starts with leadership. Mr. Mario Lopez from South Almani High School, this is a certificate of recognition for being the first South Almani High School Academic Decathlon Team to compete in the 2023 California State Championships and for your exceptional achievements and success during the season. Congratulations from the entire Almani Union High School District Board of Education. Sign, Mr. President Ricardo Padilla, my vice president, Professor Estela Torres de Seigres, our clerk, Mr. Queen Nguyen, Mr. Florencio Breones is a member, and Mr. Carlos Alcedo, member. Congratulations for your hard work. Not only do we offer you this certificate, but we also offer you our pin. This is the lapel pin that we give whenever we're recognizing somebody, and it really means a lot to us for the work that you do. And also, thank you for honoring your mentor. I know that we all have mentors. Professor Torres de Seigres has been my mentor for me, but I heard that you mentioned your mentor. Tell me again who that mentor was.
Mr. Oscar Castillo.
Mr. Oscar Castillo. Let's give him a round of applause for mentoring him. So go ahead and stand over here, and I'm gonna do the first recognition. Professor Torres de Seigres, go ahead and give him a pin. Do we have a pin? Board members, come on up here. We always stand back there like we're shy, and, you know, none of us are shy. We all love to talk. All right, the next person is, make sure you get your pin, okay? Perfect. Next, I'd like to recognize one of our Academic Decathlon members, Giselle Ferrer. Come on up. Okay, of course, Mr. Padilla is gonna call the only one who's not here. You know why, though, right? Because in my day job, I do child welfare and attendance, and I pay attention to absences and tardies. No, here you go. It's all good. She worked very hard. She deserves it. Make sure we give her a pin. A pin. Who's got the pins? Make sure that everybody gets a pin board. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Emiliano Gallegos. Come on up here, Emiliano Gallegos. All right. Again, all of our certificates read as follows. This is for all the students. Emiliano, congratulations, eagle. Here you go, sir. And you also get a pin, yeah? You shake the, there you go. Yeah, and stand up here with your, with your awesome coach and teacher. And the certificate reads as follows, "For being the first South Almani High School Academic Decathlon Team to compete in the 2023 California State Championships and for your exceptional achievements and success during this season." Again, congratulations from our entire Board of Education, right? Special. Next, we have Camila Ortega. You look very familiar, aren't you? The ASB, or past ASB president? Former, yeah. Give her another round of applause. She was ASB president for that. Yes. Next, we have another eagle, Daniela Valencia. Congratulations. There you go. Next, we have Vincent Voe. Birthday boy. Birthday boy. All right, all right, all right. Congratulations. Your certificate. And you know what? Let's sing him "Happy Birthday." Turn around. Ready? Right here. You can get "Happy Birthday" from the Board of Education and the entire public. Here we go. Ready? Vincent is his name, okay? Here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Vincent. Happy birthday to you. Yeah. Congratulations, okay? Congratulations. There you go. Next, I'd like to pass this on to my vice president, Vice President Professor Estela Torres de Seigres.
Next one is our eagle, Valeria Perez. Congratulations. I know how hard it is to work on this one. I know. I had, I was the mother with my, my kids when they were in that, in that program. The next one is Natalie Reyes. Congratulations, that dear, thank you very much, Natalie. Congratulations. Keep it up, do a good job, okay? Another eagle is Mayuri Spilliak. Mayuri, congratulations. Keep it up, do a good job.
Next, we'll have a board member, Mr. Carlos Alcedo, do some more presentations.
Before I get to the next names, I just wanted to take a quick opportunity just to thank Mr. Lopez and to take a quick look at all the students that we have here because I get a feeling that in 10 years, somebody here is gonna be leading the next group, and hopefully that legacy continues and, and we go on to nationals, right? Hopefully before then, but, but that's the way it works. Mr. Castillo is your mentor. Hopefully, you guys rise to the occasion, come back to South Almani as an educator, and lead the next group of kids. And also, we know it doesn't happen without the parents. So parents, give yourselves a big round of applause for everything you do. Sorry.
Robin, never mind. I have enough. I miscounted. Thank you, Mr. Alcedo. I'd like to call up Henry Liam. So for those who didn't hear Ruben's comments, he says that Yvette was accepted to every UC. So congratulations. That's a huge accomplishment. And I think last but certainly not least, Arturo Mercado.
At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on to my colleagues, see if anybody wants to give some personal, make some personal comments. Start off with my left.
My personal comment is, thank you very much, Mr. Lopez. I know how hard you work. You always bring me back, 1999, Arroyo High School. My youngest daughter was there, and she was in the Academic Decathlon, and she was doing the best with a group of persons. They were wonderful. And the most important thing was exactly the leader. And those girls, the ones that I still have contact with them, they are good leaders. They are wonderful lawyers. My daughter is one of the lawyers. And everything she says, that she got all the leaderships thanks to this group. Thank you so much. You are lucky and keep it up, do a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor Torres de Seigres. Mr. Alcedo?
Again, just thank you to the parents that are here. Parents, please stand. We know that, along with the students' dedication, the teachers' dedication, you play a huge part in your child's education, so I just wanted to give you kudos, as well as Mr. Lopez. Again, thank you, and students, congratulations.
I mean, what, what hasn't already been said? I just want to say congratulations to the team again. An amazing group of individuals. How, how many of you are gonna be returning next year? Raise your hands. Raise them, raise them high. Awesome. This is really awesome. To Mr. Lopez, thank you so much for your dedication to our students. As I've shared before, it's always wonderful to have our students return back home to serve as educators within our district. And you're a very busy individual. I mean, this, this alone would take up a lot of time, but you're also the, the teacher liaison to PTSA, and those meetings apparently go till like 10 o'clock at night sometimes. So, you know, thank you for your dedication to South Almani High School. I look forward to seeing you in future years with more and more students, bringing home more and more medals, and I will be waiting for that national championship. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you to the parents for helping out, dedicating time to your students, being involved in their lives, and most importantly, supporting them in everything that they do. So thank you again.
Yes, thank you to all the parents, and I'm going to speak in my primary language. Voya hablar en mi idioma primario. Como presidente de la mesa directiva, me da mucho orgullo que estos estudiantes estén aquí. Yo sé que hay padres que no entienden inglés, que solamente hablan español, y quiero decirles que de mi parte como presidente de la mesa directiva y de todos mis colegas estamos muy orgullosos del trabajo que han hecho estos muchachos y muchachas. Sabemos que hay mucho esfuerzo, mucha dedicación, mucho sudor, mucho estrés, pero el maestro está ahí para ayudarles con todo eso. Porque estos niños de nuestro distrito son estudiantes que son aprendices de inglés, quiere decir que se habla otro idioma en la casa. Son estudiantes que califican para los programas de comida gratuita porque sus padres no ganan mucho dinero en casa, y también sus padres son inmigrantes. Todavía ese es el tipo de estudiantes que tenemos en este...
Todavía ese es el tipo de estudiantes que tenemos en este distrito, pero aunque seamos todas esas cosas, de todos modos pueden llegar muy lejos, muy lejos aunque tengamos esas vidas que en veces no tengamos todo el dinero o todo lo que otras escuelas pueden tener, pero hay maestros que van a apoyar a sus hijos para que lleguen a un nivel muy alto y que no importe de dónde venimos, lo que importa es a dónde vamos y donde un código de zip code o una sola postal no va a determinar el futuro que van a tener los estudiantes. Now, what did I say in English? I said, many of our students here come from backgrounds that, you know, they're English-language learners where English is not the primary language. There are also students that qualify for free and reduced lunch because their parents don't make a lot of money. There are also children whose parents might be immigrants and everything in between. But your zip code did not determine where you end up. It's not where you start, it's where you finish. And I have no doubt, just like my colleague, Mr. Carlos Alcido, said that you guys will go on and do some great things and Professor Torres says that her daughter accomplished so many things and there's attorneys and a lot of other professionals. I have no doubt that you guys will do the same thing. Now, let me just ask one question. Raise your hand if you speak another language other than English in your house. Levanta la mano si hablan otro idioma que no sea inglés en su casa. Up high, look high. Okay, esos son los aprendices de inglés. They're the English-language learners. And why do I make such a big point about that? I make a big point of that because when I was a young kid, I used to get called the beaner. Me llamaban frijolero. Because I would speak Spanish, that would happen to me. And, you know, sometimes people will come and say, "Why do you guys always tell that story?" I have to tell that story because that is who I am, that's where I come from. I can never forget where I come from. And I know that there's somebody here listening to me or out there that, yeah, they called me frijolero and I was an English-language learner. I was a student on free and reduced lunch because my parents didn't make a lot of money. My dad was a construction worker, we had six kids. And my parents left their country to come to America for a better life. Why do I tell that story? Because even as a beaner, even as an English-language learner, even as an immigrant, even as having immigrant parents, I am now the president of the Board of Education. And I don't tell that story to think that I'm hot stuff. I tell that story because you can do whatever you want. You can be the president of the United States, you can be the council member, the student board member, you could be the board member here. Anything is possible, don't ever forget that. And I have no doubt that you have instilled that in them. I have no doubt. And again, I'd like to say some words for Mr. Queen Nguyen. Mr. Queen Nguyen could not be here, but if there's a board member who's going to talk to you about high levels of mathematics and is going to put principals on the hotspot, where's the principal? You're the principal. He will put principals on the hotspot of their math test scores need an improvement. If there's a board member who's going to talk about mathematics and, you know, AB math or AMATH or BMATH and statistics and that higher-level math, that new board member, Mr. Queen Nguyen, he's coming after those principals, after the leadership to make sure that we are offering mathematics at a very high level. So, this is for principals, I am putting you on notice and I'll be right behind Mr. Queen Nguyen and will the rest of the board because we want our kids to be engaging in higher-level math and it starts with the leadership and we must make that happen. And if you want to see the face of high-level math, look at Acadeka. Give them another round of applause for achieving at a very high level. And why do I say that? Because before Ruben Carrasco came, we had another young lady who was my student trustee from Rosemead High School and her name is Citlalik Palacios. And I don't forget her because she put that man on the spot, Mr. Larry Cecil. And she told him, "I want to know, how come in my classes at Rosemead High School, there's only two Latina girls in these high-level math classes?" Do you remember that day when she asked you that? So, it is something that makes principals uncomfortable, superintendents uncomfortable, assistant supa vet services, why aren't there more of those kids? Not just Latino kids, but the class should look multicultural. And what do I mean by that? If you have 50% Asian and 50% Latino and the classes are only 90%, what ethnic group? There's some serious questions we got to ask about, how come those other kids are not getting into those math classes? Does it feel uncomfortable? Yeah. We need to have those discussions. Do I care if it feels uncomfortable? No. I want answers. But these are the answers. Anybody who says that kids don't love math, you need a teacher like, and I want to call you Mr. Castillo, right? Lopez. Your mentor's in my head. Like Mr. Lopez, it all starts with leadership. So, one more round of applause for Mr. Lopez for your great leadership. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated, okay? Gracias a todos. Oh, pictures, esperen, hold on, timeout. Go back, they're going to want pictures. VMA wants pictures. She'll tell us what to do. You want board members to get out? Okay. After Zuniga. Do we have the other ones? Just stay here. You got them for me? Onward. Congratulations again to South Almani Academic Decathlon. We're going to stay down here because we're going to continue the recognition. The next, and believe me, as the former principal, I'm not biased against any of our schools, but tonight at South Almani High School recognized, just happened to land that way for a great reason. We shift from academics to athletics and we have a remarkable accomplishment, not only in the individual, but also a team accomplishment of the South Almani High School Girls Wrestling Team. So, round of applause for the Girls Wrestling Team. As you may have heard, that wrestling has become a popular sport for female students and as in the past, when we had a few girls, they would wrestle alongside with the boys' team and that was the only option that we had. As we increased the enrollment of the girls' interest in wrestling, it became popular within our school community, especially at South Almani High School, given the outstanding leadership there with the coaches in that team. An opportunity to form its own team and compete both at the local league level and also now at the state level as well. So, a remarkable journey from where we started at with those pillars of students that were females wrestling out there with the boys and, you know, even pinning them and I was rooting for them, I wouldn't say that, but I was rooting for them as well during that time. But now seeing just the team's form come to fruition and also just the achievement that they have. And here to present our leaders, our coaches, is Dr. Morales, who will highlight our coaching staff and then we'll move forward with presentation of our students.
Once again, thank you, Dr. Zuniga, and that's the actual truth. At South El Monte High School, we celebrate our school mission, every student a success story. So, therefore, we go from Acadeka talent to now our student athletes sharing their talent, in this case in the season of Girls Wrestling. So, it is not our night to just continue to celebrate, it's not my point of the night, but I want to bring up head coach Hector Delgado. And as he makes his way up again, Mr. Head Coach Delgado will give us all the information about the achievements, but as a school principal, it's really an easy job when we have a committed coach, a coach that puts in the time and the energy to make positive connections with each of his athletes and then our job is just simply to continue cheering them on. So, Coach Delgado, go ahead and introduce your entire staff and team again and congratulations to the Lady Eagles Wrestling Program.
Thank you. With us today, I'd like to bring up my assistant coach, Jackie Esquivel. Coach Jackie, if you can please come up. All right. Thank you, Dr. Morales. With that said, fastest-growing sport in America right now has been Girls Wrestling and we have been blessed this year's season, we started off with 54 girls and we completed the season with 32 girls. 32 of the toughest young ladies that you'll meet in the San Gabriel Valley. We're one of the largest programs in the San Gabriel Valley and that's been a true testament to the success, the growth of the sport also, to our leadership. So, Dr. Morales, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you've done and particularly, I want to thank the school board. The success of our program started many years ago and it started with one man in this room. You guys know that. Mr. Larry Cecil, many years ago, helped plant the seed for our Beat the Streets Kids Wrestling Program. The success we're having now is a direct result of this man here. He had the vision. And it's hard not to be emotional about it because we talk about the success, we celebrate the success, but it is one person who believed and said, "Hector, we can do this and let's start this." And we started nine years ago at South Almani and at Mountview High School. We've relaunched our program back at Mountview High School. Our program, we're a social development program first before we are an athletic program. We work with youth ages five to 14, both boys and girls, and we offer our program free. And that's all made possible by this entire school board here who has supported us and Mr. Larry Cecil again. I can't thank him enough and we're here celebrating. That seed was planted nine years ago and you can see the success and I want to name off some of the schools that our kids have been accepted to. Again, we want to continue the tradition of academic excellence at South Almani High School and this is where our senior girls are currently going this year and have been accepted to. Many of the different CalSHs, Northridge, Los Angeles, Chico, Fresno, Stanislas, Calpoli Pomona, San Luis Obispo, some of the privates, the University of Chicago, UC San Diego, UC Irvine, UC Santa Barbara, UC Davis, UC Riverside, and UC Berkeley. This is where we're sitting our young ladies from the Almani Union High School District and this is all made possible again by the support of this entire board who continues to support women's wrestling here. Some of the states where our girls that have gone on to wrestling currently in college, Georgia, Michigan, Kentucky, and Iowa, those are some of the states where our girls are getting free scholarships because of their academics and their athletics ability. I'm deeply humbled today to be here before you. The state of California, CIF State, and the US Army National Guard recognize South Almani Lady Eagles Wrestling for both their academic and their community service. So, aside from their academics, there are a number of different service projects that these girls participated in and have helped make their communities better in both the cities of Almani, South Almani, and Rosemead and I couldn't be prouder of our girls. So, Dr. Zuniga, again, thank you for your tremendous support to the entire staff. Mr. Cecil, Mr. Robin Torres, and Mr. Waya Alizar, again, thank you guys from the bottom of my heart for continuing to support women's wrestling in the Mission Valley League and the Almani Union High School District. Thank you so much.
Don't go away. I don't want you guys to go away. Come on over here. First off, absolutely starts with leadership and Mr. Hector Delgado is so humble, but I'll tell you, he is the honorable Mr. Hector Delgado because he is also a councilman in the city of South El Monte where South El Monte High School is located. And, you know, thank you for your vulnerability. I know that you're speaking from the heart and I know sometimes, you know, the community or sometimes people are not used to seeing men cry, but when you stand up here and do that and you make yourself vulnerable, I know that you're speaking from the heart and I know that everything you do for Beat the Streets and women's wrestling and wrestling in general, there's no harder working coach than you and your assistant that have done this. So, Mr. Hector Delgado from South El Monte High School, certificate of recognition for the Lady Eagles Wrestling Program being honored at the CIF California Army National Guards Girls Team of the Month for February 2023. Your leadership and dedication to the communities of South Almani and Almani are truly admirable. Congratulations on behalf of the Almani Union High School District Board of Education. We'll also present him with the lapel pin and also next, we have another coach, Jackie Esquivel. Congratulations for your commitment to our young ladies in wrestling and for everything that you do. I know that it's countless hours. I know that you spend a lot of time away from your family, but I know that you invested in our kids and I know that that will come back to benefit our community, our state, our country, and our world. So, thank you, Jackie Esquivel. I'm going to start off the recognition of some of our lady wrestlers, wrestlers, our eagle wrestlers, but I think it's so powerful that not only did we recognize Acadeka, our Academic Decathlon Team, but we celebrate academics, but we also celebrate sports and both are equally important to the development of our young people. I'd like to start off by recognizing Camila Ruiz from South El Monte High School. All right. She couldn't be here, but we're still going to applaud for each one of these young ladies. They deserve it. The next athlete I'd like to call up to recognize is Andrea Trejo Carmona. The next lady eagle is Karen Voskis. She couldn't be here, but make sure you tell her that we applauded for her, okay? Make sure you give those applause to her, Mr. Delgado. The next student is Jacqueline Sotoy. We will give that award and those applause to Jackie. Next lady eagle is Alia Castañeda. The next student is Bianca Zamora. I'm telling you, I think it's because I'm child welfare in attendance in my day job or something. Katie Perez, come on Katie. I struck out. Okay, moving right on.
We didn't say this was a perfect attendance ceremony, so... Okay. I also did notice that we have a couple students that were in Acadeka that were honored and are on the wrestling team. So, that's very impressive. So, congratulations to Natalie and Bernice. That's pretty awesome. Next up, Amanda Medina. Evelyn Montes. I hope they're watching. Catherine Ariza. Daisy Ayala? All right. Daisy Ayala, come on down. You get all the applauses. Jocelyn Ayala? All right, come on down. Sulema Barcenas Torres. You should have told them there was a match tonight. And I know she's here, Bernice Benitez. Come back up. Acadeca and wrestling. Very impressive. Congratulations.
Obviously, a very... Next up, Jennifer Jimenez. Marisol Lucas. Rosalyn Lucas. Jade Martinez. Galalaya Medina. Kimberly Nguyen. Casey Reyes.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Morales, these eagles are flying really high, huh? Some, they are like chichiquilotes here, but I know I imagined that they stay here, but with the ones that you just had before, and this one's, my goodness, you are very proud. The eagles are flying very, very high. Eagles keep on flying. Keep on flying because the sky is all of you. It's for you. And then you have to keep it up, okay, with a good job. Let's see, we have him. Maleni Catano? No, Maleni Catano, we don't have Maleni Catano. Amber Diaz? Amber Diaz? Jalen Faustino Lopez? Ashley Garcia? Are you one of the girl states? Are you one of my girl states? The name sounds familiar. You are not. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Give it to her, Ashley. Okay. Ruby Gonzalez Garcia? Congratulations. Good, very good. Okay. Well, what do I have to tell you about this? I was a mother when my kids went in El Monte Union High School District, but I go back to last century, nineteen ninety-three, Arroyo High School, because my kids went to Arroyo. My son, my son was in the team of the wrestling. He learned a lot, and he was so happy taking that exercise. He was doing very well. It helped him a lot. When he went to the university, and he was very happy. What do I learn from them? I learned to admire all of you, because I know how much exercise you have to do. The girls, oh my goodness, does a lot, and I know how hard it is to do it, and I congratulate you, and especially, I congratulate your two coaches. Congratulations, and thank you very much for keeping up. And, Dr. Morales, keep on flying very high. Okay, off. Okay.
We have one more special recognition that I'd like to give, and this is a certificate of recognition for a special young lady that is present here tonight, and a South El Monte Eagle. And I'd like to honor her for being honored with the 2023 CIF Pursuing Victory with Honor Award, and for her exceptional athletics achievements in wrestling this season. And again, congratulations on behalf of the El Monte Union High School District Board of Education. And this special award goes to Lady Eagle that I'm very proud to honor tonight, and her name is Daisy Ayala. Very proud of you, okay? And at this time, I'm going to allow my colleagues to say any comments that they'd like to make.
Again, just as impressive as Acadeca is for you to dedicate your time, and many of you for other sports, and I heard, what was it, Greece? I mean, that's impressive. Musical theater, as it is, I know, being a student athlete, you know, keeping up that grade, keeping up that GPA is tough, on top of the demands, but you couldn't have asked for better coaches. Mr. Delgado has been passionate about his sport since high school? I won't say what year, Mr. Delgado. He got nervous, though. You saw that, okay? And Jackie as well, coming back again, we see that recurring with our staff. Mr. Lopez, you know, coming back to South El Monte and mentoring, and being with our youth, and getting the potential out of them. So, thank you, coaches. Thank you, students and parents. Thank you for picking them up late, for taking them everywhere on the weekends, and getting them ready for not only school, but also for their matches. So, thank you, parents.
We have a really great community here. This is one of the things that I love the most, is recognizing our students and our faculty, parents, for all the great work that you all do. Mrs. Alcedo said the word student athlete. You stole my thunder, but thank you. All of you are students first, and it is clear that your involvement in your campus at South El Monte High School runs deep. Student athletes dedicate so much time to practice, to competitions, to traveling. You know, there's a lot of winning, but there's often a lot of heartache. But you guys go out there, and you represent South El Monte High School, in the El Monte Union High School District. Coaches go out there, and you challenge the students, and you don't let them give up. You know, that tenacity, just, it doesn't apply just to the sport. It also teaches them to have that same tenacity in the classroom. I'm so proud of all of you. I would hate to ever have to be in a competition with any of you, because I guarantee you, you would pin me and just, it'd be right over right then and there. These are our students here. These are our students who dedicate so much time, and who go out and represent South El Monte High School with pride. Give them a round of applause. The amount of pride that you bring me, being here today, it's just, it's unmeasurable. And I hope that you continue to go off into the community, into the world, and remember that you were first South El Monte Eagles. Congratulations.
I'd like to also allow our student trustee, Mr. Ruben Corosco, I think he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, thank you. So, just, I want to say, I mean, I know, I mean, I know all of you guys, we all go to the same school, South. But, you know, I've been to a couple of wrestling matches, and they get flipped over pretty hard, man. It looks pretty brutal out there. But, you know, they can take them, but they also give them, and they're incredible young ladies. You know, quick story, a gentleman walked up to me, and he asked me if our male wrestling program was any good. I don't know the answer. I'm sure they're great, right? But I told him that the girls' wrestling team would give anyone a run for their money. And that's true. You know, you guys are amazing people, amazing students, and obviously, amazing athletes. And, Mr. Delgado, congratulations. Miss Jackie, congratulations as well. Just another round of applause, because, you know, you can never get enough.
Si, nomas hay padres aquí que no entienden inglesa. Gracias por estar aquí esta noche, y gracias por prestarnos a sus hijos, por ser parte del equipo de luchas. Ha tenido un éxito tremendo la lucha de jovencitas. Ya teníamos los jovencitos, pero la noche es de las jovencitas porque han hecho un trabajo estelar. Han competido a un nivel muy alto y han recibido mucho reconocimiento. Y todo tiene que ver por la Miss Jackie y el honorable señor concejal y trabajador de entrenador de la escuela de Suzurel Monte. Es un placer tener a estas jovencitas aquí. No solo nos gusta reconocer los logros académicos, pero también los logros atléticos. Es importante tener el balance, y esta escuela realmente enseña lo que se puede lograr o lo que pueden lograr los jóvenes cuando tienen liderazgo apropiado para llevarlos a un nivel muy alto. Y como dice mi colega, la profesora Estela Torres de Segres, ellos son las águilas y el cielo les pertenece. Están volando muy alto. I'd like to say, like Professor Torres de Segres tells them, you are the Eagles, and the sky, the limits, the skies belong to you, and it totally belongs to all our Lady Eagles. Not only do we like to recognize academics, but we also like to recognize athletics. It's important to have a balance, and at South El Monte High School, we have that. And it all starts because of the leadership of Miss Jackie and the honorable Mr. Hector Delgado. So, tonight, I know, as my colleagues all said, and our student trustee, we are very proud of South El Monte High School for all of their great achievements, and I know that there's more to come in the years to come. So, can we have one final round of applause for the Lady Eagles? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and take pictures. Board, we can stay here. Let's get in this picture, and then we'll get one with just the students and the staff.
Thank you. Before you guys move, why don't we get Acadeca, whoever's here from Acadeca, and the Lady Eagles Wrestling Team together? Everybody, come on up here. Everybody. Let's show everybody South El Monte High School and what you guys are about. We're going to mix wrestling with academics. Oh, yeah. Awesome. Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue with tonight's meeting of Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. I know there's a lot of excitement in the air with South El Monte High School. Congratulations to our Acadeca teams, as well as our wrestling team. So, moving right along, we are now on item number seven, public comments. At this time, I would like to call Arthur Monreal, Program Manager, ESGV AJCC. Welcome, Mr. Monreal.
Thank you, Mr. Board President.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to tell you a couple of stories. This afternoon, I was at the El Monte, South El Monte Chamber of Commerce luncheon, their monthly luncheon, and I got a chance to tell all these employers, all these businesses, about the programs that we have at the East San Gabriel Valley Americas Job Center. And one of the gentlemen that was there said, you know, what you're telling us, I really want you to tell the school board for El Monte, and can you go there tonight? And I said, sure, I'll be there. And so, I'm here to tell you about the LA County-funded Youth at Work Program that is designed to help students from the ages of fourteen to twenty-four to...
Hold on for just one second. Can we, what's wrong with the mic? Okay.
Okay. So, it's basically a program that's there to help youth figure out what they want to do with their life, put some money in their pocket, and also help them get started in the next career. So, one of the things that we're doing right now, and we're doing some exciting things right now, is something with Nickelodeon. They have a subsidiary called Noggin. We are doing paid internships for people eighteen to twenty-four, and Noggin is taking these people in to teach them how to become creative content creators. The internship is for a hundred and sixty hours. We are paying them sixteen dollars and four cents an hour to do this. This is a program that is exciting, because it's going to give kids a chance to explore this as a career. It's something that, at least in the southeast area, we don't get a lot of, because we're not that close to the entertainment industry. But this is an exciting program that is in process right now. We're going to put twenty-five kids in this program. Another program, the La Puente Hills Park Project, the old landfill is being turned into a county park, and we have right now fifteen interns working with the studio MLA, which is the architect that designed the project. They're doing internships to find out what it takes to do landscape architecture, and it's going really well. So, we're giving these people a chance to explore new careers, and we are doing some exciting projects. And I was telling the employers today that I- And I was telling the employers today that I want them to think outside the box and try to come up with ideas how we can work together with them with these types of projects to expose the kids, the children, the young adults, to the world of work. Del Monte, South Del Monte are two of our main cities and I really want to rebuild the relationship that we once had when we were located in Del Monte to get the kids these programs. So really, that's about all the time I have, but I would really love to have more time in the future to come and talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monreal. Next person we have is Chelsea Ma, student at Rosemead High School. Welcome, Chelsea. You can pull it down, pull it down if it's too high. Yeah, there you go, there you go. Perfect.
Hello, Board Members and Trustees. I am Chelsea Ma and this is my friend Felipe Salazar. We are both students at Rosemead High School and we are part of a student-led group called Student Voices. We have been working, our group has been working on a program at Rosemead High School to combat grooming and other students, seniors who are not available here today. Samantha Wang and Anna Zhang have been helping us to create a program and resolution to support the child abuse prevention here at the Del Monte Union High School District. We in this group have gathered our efforts to push for increased resources and education regarding child abuse and grooming through lectures in our health classes, comprehensive and effective teacher trainings to guide teachers about important boundaries between students and teachers and appropriate relationships that teachers may have with students. And April Child Abuse Awareness Month is being worked with in collaboration with the school's ASP, where we will be distributing shirts and pins to increase awareness about child abuse and grooming, of which will help students become more informed about grooming and understand the signs of the abuse. Should this resolution pass, it will demonstrate a historic change in culture of Rosemead High School, a demonstration that healing is possible if a community bands together to address pertinent issues that threaten the safety of children. We hope that through this board resolution, our efforts can go beyond just our campus and district-wide inner efforts to mitigate and de-stigmatize grooming to help not only the present students of the Del Monte Union High School District, but also the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Next, I'd like to invite Sara Quesada, teacher at Del Monte High School. Welcome, Ms. Quesada.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
So it was wonderful to hear the amazing things that our teachers are doing all over the district, particularly in South Del Monte. Today, it was highlighted and I think it makes the whole community, it leaves a legacy and indelible inspiration on all students and on the community and...
Hold on for a minute, let us, can you start her timer again, please? Start her timer. Sorry about that.
No worries. And all the accolades that you all pay to our teachers and that's why I'm here today. After two years of basically being in hibernation during the COVID pandemic, it has been the role of us as teachers to revive and reinvigorate and resurrect some of those, just that latent mind. And we would not have been able to do it were it not for a lot of the additional staffing that we've gotten, albeit temporary. And so I know that we've gone through a lot of budget challenges in the past. 11 years ago, we had to pink slip a lot of teachers, but we were in an economic crisis and we were low on funding. Unfortunately, or fortunately actually, that's not the situation today. And I'm here to urge you to think about keeping all of the positions that we hired on a temporary basis open, at least for another year, because I know that there is plenty of money coming from the state, you know, to cover the educational losses. And the greatest investment as we have seen has been with placing our money not in programs or anything like that, but that human contact, again, to have that, that's what the kids respond to. And the new teachers that we've gotten on our campus and I imagine at other campuses, Mr. Mario Lopez, and I remember that name because of the celebrity, but he was also one of my students, I recognized him. Obviously, we could see the great energy that new teachers bring and I think it is incumbent upon all of us and it is our responsibility to maintain those numbers, to maintain the teachers, to keep the positions open for as long as we can. We are, and I'm speaking to the choir here, we are a profession that involves human contact and it is that that keeps the students engaged and focused and inspired and they do that for us. I mean, I have been in the classroom for 34 years now and it's still a wonderful day to walk into the class and any little knucklehead, they wake you up, but it's a dialectical relationship. And our students, and yes, our class sizes could be smaller and it's wonderful that it gives us the opportunity to work with our students more closely and to get to know them and to re, I guess, re-acclimate them to the classroom. That was a lot of loss and that is the human contact that we need. And again, that's why I'm here to speak on behalf of the new teachers and urge you to keep those positions open. If we have the money now and I know that it's gonna run out, but why not? Why, even if our enrollment numbers are going down, I think there is a way of making it happen and cutting here and there, but it is the human resources that are important. It's wonderful to see our alumni come back and this is, that's a testament to the work that we do. And so I wanna, hope, I wanna appeal to your nature as human beings and you're all educators, that we maintain those positions open. I know a lot of them will be open, but we're still gonna lose some people and again, to reconsider that in the future. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment, Ms. Quesada. Next, we have TED, Ted, I'm sorry, Ted?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is in regards to the Rosemead Center. The decisions of this board cannot be whimsically driven. The law requires that this board's decision be data-driven as many millions of taxpayer dollars are involved. The Rosemead Center doesn't belong to this board, only its lawful management. This trust, the trustees must follow state law as the trustees can be held responsible for any losses. Mr. Padilla, what data are you using that is so overwhelming that it is, that it supersedes the professional DLR report? That report substantiates that the Rosemead Center is not surplus property, but is necessary for this district to maintain and operate. The Brown Act allows you, Mr. Padilla, to give a brief response at this time. For transparency, please explain the data that you have chosen to use for the lease of the Rosemead Center. Please provide your transparency response now. The taxpayers are waiting to hear from you.
Mr. Ted?
No, no, I wish to have a response. Mr. Padilla, you like to let everybody know that you have a master's degree with your higher education, can't you give us the taxpayers a response as far as what data you are using for your decision to lease the Rosemead Center?
You have a minute and one second to go.
Well, you should be able to have that one minute to explain yourself.
Use up your minute however you like, Mr. Ted.
Well, this is rather scandalous that you can't explain how you come about your ideas of leasing the Rosemead Center when this body here has paid money for a professional report to be done that says that it should not be leased out. Can't you use your master's degree to explain yourself? Well, this just represents scandalous corruption in my mind.
Thank you for your public comment, Mr. Ted. Next, we have Ms. Stephanie Vega, student at South Del Monte High School. Welcome.
Hello and good evening, Board Members and Trustees.
Good evening.
My name is Stephanie Vega and I am a senior at South Del Monte High School. I am here today because I, just like my peers, are absolutely sick and tired of this district and its actions. We are tired of not feeling safe at school. We are tired that there isn't constant accountability towards campus security. We should have the liberty to walk in the halls of our schools without thinking of whether am I going to make it safely to my next class or even home? We are tired of being lied to and having our educational journey jeopardized. We don't have the necessary tools or guidance to help us succeed in life and, most importantly, college. Outside of this precise building, it says, "Community committed to college and career." But is it really a community committed to college and career? It's not. Throughout my four years, some teachers, some, have handed grades like it was free candy as they sit behind their desks. This is harming and dragging us down. Teachers are rewarding us for our mediocre work. These grades hype us up into believing that we too have a shot at being accepted into a university like Stanford or UCLA. But when March comes around, our hearts become broken when we question if we are even good enough for these universities. This is exactly what happened to me. I worked very hard for all my four years of high school, maintained a pretty good GPA, did my extracurriculars, and applied to 13 universities. I got rejected from nine and waitlisted from one. Here today, I ask you to not let this happen to other students. I have met amazing students who have every right and potential to be accepted into top universities, but in the end, they don't. I ask that we stop spending money on modernization because a new class with the same lack of resources was just as good as the old classroom. Students should become more informed about the impact of grade inflation and programs like LIDA and QuestBridge. In addition, students should have access to accredited help with writing personal statements, which nowadays is a huge part of one's college application. How are we, how are we as students supposed to use our resources if there isn't much to go off of? Each of you may be asking, why should I listen to this 18-year-old girl? Well, first and foremost, because I am part of this district and every decision of yours affects me. And two, because at the end of the day, you serve me, not the other way around.
Thank you, Ms. Vega. Appreciate your public comment. Next, I'd like to call Ms. Catherine Alameo, parent at South Del Monte High School. Welcome, Ms. Alameo.
Well, I'm back. So what's going on? It's been quite a few weeks, hasn't it? I'm the first to admit that some of the choices I've made over the last week or so have been questionable, let me tell you. But I'm 100% sure that the choices that some of you have made up here are most certainly not okay and have made many of us rack our brains about your choices. We continue to use logic and reason and we continue to come up short. The problem is, we're not dealing with logic or reason. We're dealing with a very unhealthy, codependent, personal relationship. Earlier today, students walked out at South Del Monte High School in support of stopping gun violence. We were told over and over again that safety is of utmost importance and sadly, it's the first thing to be compromised. Great job, Eagles. I'm proud to say that my daughter was one of those students to exercise their freedom of speech so boldly and I encourage all students to be as loud and bold as needed to make a difference in their futures. She's at home now catching up on schoolwork. She texted me the following and I wanted to share it with you. Let me know when the pizza's going to be delivered. Also, have fun, be your most opinionated self. I love you, mama. But with that said, my friends call me cat because I'm pretty feisty. Estella, I challenge you to make an appointment with every LGBTQ plus club we have at every single high school in our district and allow them to educate you on what is and what is not acceptable language to use when referring to the LGBTQ community. The homophobic comments your husband, David De Segres, made about one of our board members was and is highly offensive and unacceptable, especially because he is also an elected official. Although we cannot be held responsible for what others say, we can have an influence on others, especially our spouse, our life partner, that typically shares similar morals? Do you share that same moral compass as your husband? And if not, what are you doing about it? You have been asked before to apologize publicly. I would love to see that happen tonight. How many more people do you think that are your friends? Is it going to take for you to realize that your choices are making you lose those friends? Easter is Sunday. Please take that holy time to reflect on your sins and thank God he sent his only son for ours. Good night.
Thank you for your public comment, Ms. Alameo. Next, we have Mr. Paul Ariano.
I apologize, we need a new mic. Doctor Zuniga, get a new mic. That's, mic is pathetic.
I do not own the rights to the following material. Source is available upon request. California Government Code, Section 1090, which prohibits public officials from making public contracts in which they have a financial interest, is notoriously vague. The legislature expanded Section 1090 to capture not just the public officials, but those who assist them. Consequences can be heavy fines and even criminal convictions. Courts define financial interest very broadly to encompass both direct and indirect benefits. A public official may violate the statute even if they don't realize that their conduct is prohibited. Courts have rejected the defense of advice of counsel or they obtained prior approval from an attorney. An official might violate Section 1090 even if the public entity they work for and its attorneys told them that their conduct was lawful and not a violation of Section 1090, even hypothetically so. A court may find that a contract formed in violation of 1090 is void. District attorneys across California vigorously prosecute 1090 violations as felonies carrying potential jail time and personal and financial ruin. Effective January 1, 2015, Senate Bill 952 added aided and abetting liability to the statute. Now, a public official's colleagues, such as fellow board members, attorneys, and legal counsel, could violate Section 1090 if they promote or vote upon a public contract knowing that their colleague has a financial interest in it. That's the end of the paraphrased materials. The California Fair Political Practices Commission did not say you are off the hook. It stated very clearly, "The alleged improper activity," quote unquote, "has yet to occur." You can censure and recall whomever you want. We don't need anyone else's votes. All we need is you three, you two, and the one that's missing tonight, for PACC. Go ahead, vote for them. At best, I personally estimate that your odds of success with the Rosemead site are about 50/50, which is not bad, but it's not good either. You are already rolling the dice with our district, with our students' future. Are you ready to roll the dice with yours? Go ahead, vote for PACC. Ironically, that is what we need. Ironically, that is what we need to move forward to protect our students' interests.
Thank you for your public comment. Next, we have Mr. Charles Hoffman. Mr. Charles Hoffman.
My name is Charles Hoffman. I am a resident within the El Monte Union High School District. Wonder how many of you sitting on this dais can honestly say that? Anyway, greetings for the day to all of you. To start, I want to say I am very disappointed in some of you sitting on this dais in the way you are handling my tax money and the special education students. You tell me others, and you tell others and I about the students, the way, excuse me, you tell others and I you care about the students. The way you are walking over the special educational students, I don't see your caring. There are those of you here that make me feel you're loyal to PCC, Pasadena City College, and not to the voters, the taxpayers, or the students within the El Monte Union High School District. You show your loyalty to me by the way you vote. I want to repeat what one person has said to you more than once here, and I feel it needs to be repeated again and again and again because it falls on deaf ears. Shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. There are those of you sitting on this dais this night, a statement written back in 1897 by a person called Mark Twain that addresses some of you so well. He wrote, "First, God made, in the first, okay, in the first place, God made idiots. This was practice, then he made school boards." This statement seems to fall, this statement seems to be true today, as, as it was 120, 126 years ago for some of you. Shame on you, shame on you, shame on you. What you're doing to the students, the taxpayers, and my money.
Thank you for your public comment. Next, we have Mr. Jeff Morris. Welcome.
Thank you. Leave it to Mr. Twain to shed some intelligence. All right, I am here again to speak about the board's vote on January 18th, just like some of the other speakers tonight. The vote to terminate the contract with DLR, thus depriving the Adult Transition Center of their rightful location and throwing away over $1 million of the taxpayer bond money. When I last spoke on March 1st, I presented the Board and District Administration with a petition I created on change.org to block the school board from following through with this vote. On that date, the petition had 1,250 signatures. It is now at 1,847. Obviously, a growing number of people see what the board did as blatantly wrong. Let's go back and look at the original decision. A series of workshops were held in 2020 and 2021 with various stakeholders. Meetings were held with students, faculty, and district staff. A great deal of planning and discussion went into the decision over days, weeks, and months. Then we come to January 18th vote. It was quickly thrown onto the board's agenda. Of the three board members who voted in favor of ending the contracts would be Mrs. DeSegres, Mr. Nguyen, and Mr. Padilla. How much input did you have with your constituents that you are supposed to represent in trustee areas two, three, and five? It's funny, but I don't recall any of you having town hall meetings, sending out informational flyers, and having meeting, formal, any formal meetings at all with the voters in your areas. So how can you make such an important decision without that input? Did you tell the voters that you represent that you felt it was a wise decision to throw away about $1,500,000 in the El Monte Union High School District bond money? I seriously doubt you did. Did you tell them that you're going to discriminate against the students of the Adult Transition Center by taking away their new home that is El Monte Union High School District property and handing it to Pasadena City College? I think not. Stop being fakes and phonies to your constituents. Call a town hall in your trustee areas. Tell them what you three voted to do. Either be honest with them and see if they agree with your decision, or drop this ridiculous vote and follow through with the district's original commitment to the students of the El Monte Union High School District, the ones that you were elected to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Moving right along, Mr. Luis Serrano, teacher at El Monte Rosemead Adult School. Welcome, Mr. Serrano.
Okay. Is this on now? Yeah, it's working? Good afternoon, board members, district administration, and audience. I am here today to speak in support of our temporary staff members that currently hold positions in our schools. Temporary staff members are vital to the functioning of all of our high schools, including the adult school. They need our support to continue with what they have started and established. From day one, these teachers have met student needs in different academic areas. They have built relationships that motivate student learning, have met the task to teach rural languages and advanced placement level courses at multiple levels, and are vital to the continuation of teaching English language development courses in our high schools. Counselors in this category are also indispensable to our school community. They have taken care of the mental health needs of our students and have communicated with parents and families in times of need. Dual-side council members have developed safety and achievement plans with parents, students, and community members. Our class and club advisors, along with coaches, have led our student groups and developing leaders to run school events and to serve the community. You know, thinking about this topic, it all comes down to this. We need continuity in meeting our students' needs. We need the commitment and support of our district administration and school board in this matter, with this matter. We propose that positions temporarily funded and classified as temporary be changed to permanent positions. This situation is one of those in our district that needs to be fixed. I've, I've heard this from board members in the past sessions, that's the speak about, you know, your visits to the different high schools. This situation has got to get fixed. You know, we have to fix it. In our adult schools, we need some of our part-time teachers to become full-time, especially in ESL department where most of our lower-level classes have waiting lists, you know, and also in our high school diploma department where we teach our academic subjects and prepare students for college and the workforce. And remember, the functions served by our temporary employees are vital to the continued and improved well-being of our school communities. Let's give them the permanency that they and our students deserve. Permanency gives teachers a peace of mind. They don't have to worry about being laid off, you know, the following year, and it also helps them to, to dedicate themselves and their time to what they do best, and that is, teach our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment, okay?
At this time, I did get another public comment. It's a, it says, no name, student, South Del Monte, and the post it says, "Just wants to, wants the following to be read aloud. Student wishes to be anonymous," which I respect, and he writes, "The incident at South Del Monte High School today, parentheses, school walkout, any comments." And so that was a public comment that I received that they, the student wanted me to read. That concludes the, the public comment section of the tonight's agenda. At this time, we're moving on to item number eight, B8, Communication from Union Representatives of EMUEA and CSEA. Do we have any representative from EMUEA? Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Grace Hernandez, the vice president.
Thanks.
And I stand here today to express EMUEA's support of temporary staff and urge the district to do the right thing by students by making these positions permanent. Over the past couple of years, EMUHSD has continually hired temporary staff, which means that they are on a year-to-year contract. These positions, rather, these people, although categorized as temporary, are crucial to the function of each site. The district has also converted previously permanent positions to temporary positions, even though those classes are a graduation requirement. With this in mind, these positions, these people, are also crucial to student success. To that end, in recent years, temporary staff has made a permanent positive impact on school communities in various manners. They have built strong and lasting relationships with students. We all know that these types of relationships motivate students to do better, both behaviorally and academically. They have supported students in their journey to be mentally healthy. Students have benefited from their expertise in multiple subject areas through the development of their critical thinking skills and language acquisition. These temporary staff members have rooted themselves in the district by reaching out to parents, becoming school-site council members, coaches, club advisors, and multiple other voluntary positions. EMUEA will like to urge EMUHSD to make a commitment to meeting the needs of our students by making these temporary positions permanent. We understand that these positions are currently funded with temporary money. Despite that, we believe that the district should reduce the student-to-student, student-to-teacher ratio because smaller class sizes will lead to better student achievement by increasing individual access to instruction. Our students deserve the best, and that starts in the classroom. They need permanent teachers now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Do we have any representative from CSEA, California School Employees Association?
At this time.
Excellent. Moving right along the agenda, we're now on item C of the agenda. This is oral slash written communication, and our, we're going to go ahead and start off with, number one, Public Hearing A-D Initial Proposal from CSEA Chapter 11 to El Monte Union High School District, El Monte Union High School District to CSEA Chapter 11, El Monte Union High School District to EMUEA, and EMU, EMUHSD to EMUEAAE.
Yes, President Padilla, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on any of the, what we call, sunshining or initial proposals from the either Association of CSEA Chapter 11 to El Monte Union High School District or El Monte Union High School District to CSEA, EMUEA, or EMUEA Adult Education, which represent the Teachers Union, EMUEA. So you're going to see items A, as you mentioned, all the way through items D, which reflects the public hearing for the initial proposals.
So at this time, we open the public, public hearing. Is there anybody to speak on any of those items, on item C1?
No.
Hearing none, I hereby close the public hearing. Go ahead, Dr. Zuniga.
No, this is just an opportunity for any public comments to come forward, which I don't think, believe we have any during the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, we will move on to item C2, Initial Proposal of the California School Employees, better known as CSEA, and its El Monte Union High School District, Chapter Number 11, to the El Monte Union High School District, EMUHSD, for the 2023-2024 school year.
There's no one here for public comment for this item.
Okay. Number three, Initial Proposal for the El Monte Union High School District to the California School Employees Association, CSEA, and its El Monte Union High School District, Chapter 11, for the 2023-2024 school year. Again, there's nobody here for that.
No, sir.
So we'll move right along. Item number four, Initial Proposal of the El Monte Union High School District to the El Monte Union Educators Association, EMUEA, for the 2023-2024 school year. No one here is for that. Item number five, Initial Proposal for the El Monte Union High School District to the El Monte Union Educators Association, Adult Education, EMUEAAE, for the 2023-2024 school year.
No public comment.
Okay, moving right along, we're on C6, Board of Trustee Assignments for the 2023 Commencement Ceremonies. Think everybody received a copy of the assignments and where we're going?
Yes, this is communication to board members assigned to the commencement ceremonies that are coming for the class of 2023. As a reminder, there are two dates noted for graduations, and an opportunity for us to provide the board with two, two appearances at one of our commencement ceremonies, one of them assigned to present the class, the other one to also be part of the ceremony.
Excellent. Can you please announce which board of trustees and what, what high school they will be going to, Dr. Edward Zuniga?
Of course. We will start off. Make sure I get that right. So we have Fernando Arledesma High School. That is going to be all of our aboard because it does start an hour or two hours prior to the actual Wednesday commencement on June 7th. Our Adult Transition Center is also on June 7th, which all of our board who is available is welcome to attend, that is at 10:00 AM for Adult Transition Center students. And then we move on to the commencement for the comprehensive high schools on Wednesday, June 7th. El Monte High School, at the El Monte High School Stadium, we have Mr. Carlos Alcedo and any who are available. Wednesday, again, we have from, for Rosemead High School, at Rosemead High School Stadium, Mr. Qui Nguyen, and also anyone available. And we have also June 7th date for Wednesdays, South Del Monte High School, at the South Del Monte High School Stadium, Mr. Florentino Briones, and anyone else available. The next date, which is Thursday, June 8th, for Royal High School, at Rosemead High School Stadium, we have Mrs. Estella Torres DeSegres, and all available. I do want to note, due to construction, unfortunately, the commencement ceremony for Royal High School will be at Rosemead High School this year. Next, we have for Thursday, June 8th, again, for Mountain View High School, that will be at South Del Monte High School, that would be Mr. Ricardo Padilla, and all available. And again, due to construction of the athletic field, it is not available. Therefore, Mountain View High School graduation is scheduled at South Del Monte High School on Thursday, June 8th.
Thank you for that, Dr. Edward Zuniga. At this time, we will move on to item number seven. That's C, isn't Charlie seven? And this is Board and Superintendent Announcement and Communications. We'll go ahead and start with Mr. Carlos Alcedo.
I wanted to give some kudos. Over the last few weeks, I've had the opportunity to attend a few sporting events and a few ribbon cuttings, specifically the cafeteria project at Mountain View High School, which completes that. A beautiful project, and I just wanted to comment on just the amount of work that goes behind the scenes from not only our administration, our district-level administration, but the people who actually put the chairs up, take the trash, all of our classified staff that work tirelessly, who get there at the crack of dawn and stay late just to make sure that we have a wonderful environment, not only for our students, but all of our staff. I know also that was recently, on a Saturday, because of all the rain, you know, they've had to postpone baseball games and play them on the weekends, and, you know, you think about it, you know, those weekends I know are saved for those special projects where those special projects where, you know, students are on campus and try and get these done. But kudos to all the groundskeepers and the maintenance guys who just put that extra time to get all the fields, because it's not only baseball, it's softball, it's JV, and it doesn't go unnoticed, so, uh, please, kudos, and, and thank you to all of our classified staff for, for just making sure that they get everything done behind the scenes. I know they're not always recognized, but we're recognized, I wanted to recognize them tonight. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Carlos Alcedo. At this time, I'll go ahead and allow, uh, Board Member Mr. Florencio Briones.
Thank you. Just a couple items that I wanted to share tonight. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Valley Lindo School District Community Resource Center. It was a really nice event. They had a, a lot of resources, as they should, at a resource center there, including Department of Mental Health, as well as a couple of local organizations, nonprofits. It was a very well-attended event, and I was happy to see not only the staff from, um, Shively Middle School, but also from New Temple, and then, uh, you know, their board from Valley Lindo School District, our colleagues on, uh, you know, just south of us, uh, as well as representatives from the city of South Almani, as well as the County of Los Angeles and, uh, the state legislature. It was a really nice event, um, and it's gonna be a really great resource for those students there, both at, uh, at Shively and New Temple. The other item that I wanted to discuss, Mr. Alcedo spoke to it a little bit. I had the opportunity to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Bobby Salcillo Student Union Auditorium Project. This is, uh, Phase Two that we promised to the community when we replaced the cafeteria that unfortunately burnt down in 2013. I remember speaking to a, a staff member at one point when we had just opened the, uh, the Student Union in 2019, and they asked me, "Are we really gonna get that auditorium? Is that really gonna happen?" And I made that commitment to them then, that yes, we absolutely are gonna do it. We have the money for it, we have, we budgeted for it, you know, we've already had started the plans for it, and last week, that facility is now complete. Ten years is a really long time for any project, but there was a lot of logistical, legal, um, matters that we had to navigate through, and should it have taken 10 years? I don't think it should have, but a lot of it was out of our control. But here we are today. That facility is now complete. That auditorium is, uh, is now in place. I think the only thing that was left was a couple of speakers that just hadn't arrived on time. But, uh, it's a beautiful facility. If you have the opportunity, please visit Mountain View High School, drop in, you know, at one of the community meetings, a parent meeting, an event that may take place there. It's just such a beautiful facility. And thank you to everyone who did attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend the South Almani High School Modernization, uh, Groundbreaking Ceremony. As Dr. Zuniga shared in his remarks yesterday, you know, all of our schools, uh, you know, once they, eh, get to a certain age, they're eligible for modernization funds. South Almani is now at that age. I would say it's probably middle-aged now. And so it's, it's, uh, well, I guess a little bit younger middle-aged, 30 years old, but it qualifies for modernization money, uh, matching funds from the state, and, uh, those classrooms there on the campus are gonna be renovated. We're gonna provide additional, um, facilities for the students, and it's gonna be just a beautiful project, or a beautiful campus, more so than it is now. I ran into a former colleague of mine who had never been on the campus, and she could not speak any more highly of that campus. And she was telling me how beautiful it was and how much she wished the campuses within her own homeschool district, and I won't say where she's from, she wished that they were just as beautiful there. And so I, I did tell her that our, our district invests heavily, and not only in our instructional programs and our, um, athletic programs, but we also invest very heavily in our facilities as well, and it shows. You know, I remember years ago, having a former CBO tell us, uh, when we went out for a bond, that our schools have a lot of curb appeal, but they needed some TLC. And we're absolutely right. The, from, from a distance, from the street, the campuses look really nice, but if you got up close, they needed some work. And since then, since 2002, our community has supported our three bonds, Measure Y, Measure D in 2008, and, um, excuse me, Measure Y in 2002, Measure D in 2008, and Measure HS in 2018. Uh, our community has been very supportive of our schools in passing those bonds, allowing us to, to raise funds in order to renovate our facilities, provide new, uh, equipment, new, you know, furniture, new technology, and, uh, and it shows. And so I hope that the community can go out and look at the construction as it's happening at South Almani High School, uh, at Mountain View very soon, uh, at Almani High School very soon, and just see how much we continue to invest in our facilities. And the last item I wanna bring up, I wanted to respond to, uh, a public comment that was made la- at our last meeting on March 15th, on which a community member served me with a notice of intent to recall and read the, the notice during their public comment. One of the statements, uh, among many false statements that were made, was that I had falsely accused, uh, community members of making homophobic remarks about me, and that I had gone around and, uh, wished that elder community members had had a stroke. I thought it was interesting that this was included in that particular notice, because I knew exactly what they were referring to, and I thought it was fascinating that the individual who wrote that notice, uh, which is Mr. David Seigrest, um, included that, that he, that he accused me of lying about homophobic remarks that somebody had made. Well, to clear the record, the homophobic remarks that I am referring to are homophobic remarks that Mr. David Seigrest made to me in March of 2021. I had actually brought that to the board's attention back then, when Mr. Seigrest had started sending me harassing emails and text messages regarding a website that is a third-party website that I have no control over, that listed my alma mater as being Pepperdine University. When Mr. Seigrest brought that information to my attention, I reached out to Ballipedia, which is the website, and asked him to correct the information because it was incorrect. And I did respond to Mr. Seigrest via email at one point and indicated to him that other candidates from that election cycle were also listed as attending both the University of Mexico and Pepperdine University, uh, which is where Mrs. Torres de Seigrest earned her bachelor's degree and her master's degree respectively. Um, one particular candidate's profile actually said that he was a, uh, community college professor as well, as Mrs. Torres de Seigrest is. And that individual at the time was only 19 years old. So it was clear that any reasonable person would interpret that as the folks at Ballipedia copying and pasting information, making a mistake, uh, again, in a website that I had no control over. However, Mr. Seigrest took it upon himself to begin harassing me. When I contacted him to ask him if he was okay, because he continued to contact me even after I had asked him to stop, he then proceeded to send me a text message a few days later, uh, in which he said that I should be concerned about my own health, because as a gay man, I was most likely, or most certainly exposed to AIDS and HIV. So I'm gonna read an article that came out in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune this past Friday, uh, and then I will provide additional commentary to provide, um, context to the community so that they understand what's going on and where exactly this is all coming from. So this is an article published on March 31st, 2023, in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune. The headline is "Almani City School Board Member Told Gay Politician He Was, 'Most Certainly Exposed to AIDS and HIV'." End quote. The subhead says, "David Seigrest Tonight He Is Homophobic, Saying, Quote, 'I know people who have died from that, I was concerned about his safety.'" End quote. Third-party investigator hired by the Almani City School District found that Board Member David Seigrest sent harassing emails and a text message to a gay counterpart in a neighboring school district, suggesting that he was, quote, "most certainly exposed to AIDS and HIV," end quote, due to his, quote-unquote, "lifestyle," according to a newly revealed letter. The district, the Almani City School District, investigated the matter after Almani Union High School District trustee Florencio Briones filed a formal complaint about it in March 2021. The text messages resurfaced earlier this month when Seigrest backed a recall effort against Briones, alleging the Almani Union High School trustee had, among other allegations, falsely accused, quote, "residents of being homophobic." End quote. The Southern California News Group obtained a copy of a letter sent to Briones by the district, the Almani City School District, summarizing the outcome of the investigation. The Almani City School District independently verified the letter's authenticity. Quote, "The investigator concluded that Mr. Seigrest did, in fact, send you multiple emails and text messages and persisted in communicating with you after you requested that he stop," end quote, wrote Lizette Mendez Garcia, president of the Almani City School District Board, in the letter. Quote, "The investigator further included, concluded that one of the text messages Mr. Seigrest sent to you regarding your, quote-unquote, 'lifestyle,' could be construed as homophobic and fall in the category of hate speech." End quote. Seigrest has publicly denied making any homophobic remarks, including most recently at an Almani City Council meeting, where he called Briones a liar. In an interview, Seigrest acknowledged sending the text, but maintains he was expressing sincere concern for his political rival's health. Quote, "I know people who have died from that, that's not homophobia," end quote, Seigrest said. Quote, "I was concerned about his safety. If a person is gay these days, they need to be very careful." End quote. Seigrest, a Vietnam War veteran, said he served in the US Navy when service members were not allowed to be openly gay, but that he personally does not care about anyone's lifestyle, quote, "unless they put themselves in danger in some way." End quote. Quote, "If I tell someone, because of their lifestyle, to be careful, I genuinely care about that person," end quotes, Seigrest added. "As far as me being a homophobe, that's a da- it's a damn lie, and that's what I'll tell you about that." End quote. What the messages said. Seigrest sent a barrage of text messages to Briones on March 14th, 2021, taunting Briones for allegedly asking Seigrest if he had a stroke. The messages included accusations at Briones' slide about attending Pepperdine University, where Seigrest and his wife, Almani Union trustee Estela Torres de Seigrest, went to school, and state that Briones demonstrated, quote, "ignorance" by complaining about a prior spat to the Almani City Schools superintendent. One of the messages read, quote, "Concerning your feigned concern about my health, I neglected to express my own about yours. Due to your lifestyle, you are most certainly exposed to AIDS and HIV. Better be extra, extra careful." End quote. Briones denies making any comments about Seigrest having a stroke. Before the text, Briones said he called Seigrest and asked if Seigrest was okay, following a ser- a separate series of unprompted emails from Seigrest with tongue-in-cheek invitations to Pepperdine alumni events. Briones did not attend Pepperdine, and says the website Ballipedia erroneously listed the school as his alma mater. Quote, "The notion that I would ever wish for anyone to have a stroke is absolutely false. It is not something I have ever said to David Seigrest," Briones said. Quote, "I think he's been very disingenuous in trying to cover up the fact that he made the comment to me out of a place of anger." End quote. Briones is now calling for Seigrest's resignation. Quote, "I understand that every individual in this country has the right to free speech, but when you're an elected representative, such as Mr. Seigrest and myself, you should be held to a higher standard. Considering this individual has continued to malign my name and has now lied to the community about the situation, I would ask for him to resign from his position. I don't think he can continue to serve as a trustee and be trusted by this community." End quote. Latest fight sparked by recall bid. Briones and Seigrest longstanding feud reignited earlier this month when Briones accused Torres de Seigrest of having a conflict of interest due to her support for a proposal to rent property owned by the Almani Union High School District to pass it to New City College, her employer. Briones, who was censured by his colleagues in February, assisted parents in starting the process of recalling Torres de Seigrest. A resident then served Briones with a similar recall paperwork at the next meeting. The number listed as a point of contact on the documents belongs to Seigrest, though he has said he was only serving as con- as a contact person because the true proponent has issues with her cellphone. Quote, "I am one of the victims of that idiot who accused me of homophobia," end quote, Seigrest said at the time. What happened with the probe? The Almani City School District Board did not take any formal action against Seigrest following the conclusion of the investigation, even though his comments appear to violate a board bylaw requiring members to treat, quote, "everyone with civility and respect." End quote. Mendez Garcia's letter indicated, indicates the investigation determined Seigrest's comments were, quote, "personal in nature" and were not related to his position as a board trustee. End quote. Therefore, she said they were protected by his First Amendment rights. Quote, "The district does not condone personal attacks by or against its board members or rhetoric that distracts from the district's educational mission. To this end, the district has and will continue to encourage its trustees to focus their efforts on respectful and productive dialogue to advance the education of district students. Exchanges between you and Mr. Seigrest are not consistent with these values." End quote. The letter notes that while the district is not liable for Mr. Seigrest's conduct in an individual capacity, they plan to address the matter with the board member privately. Quote, "Specifically, the board is addressing your concerns with Mr. Seigrest and is in communication with him regarding the need to maintain professional decorum in his communications with members of the public, the need to conduct himself in a respectful, courteous, and professional manner, and the expectation that he model good behavior for district students and community." End quote. Seigrest, who said he recalled speaking to the district superintendent after Briones complained, did not believe his comments warranted an investigation. Quote, "I still do not know why the board was involved in the first place," end quote, he said. When I was served with the notice of intent to recall, and I read the notice, and I saw that this information was in there, that I was, quote, "a liar" for calling, for saying that somebody had made homophobic remarks about me, uh, I knew where that information was coming from. And I thought it was incredibly, um, fascinating, for lack of a better term, simply because those messages came in a written format. I have, and to this day, continue to have, those messages here. I then found out the following week that Mr. and Mrs. Seigrest attended the Almani City Council meeting and made public comments there, where Mr. Seigrest again denied making those remarks. He lied to the community. He said, "I never said those things." And then he again called me a liar for saying that he had made homophobic remarks. He went so far as to ta- talk to one of the council members, or, or reference one of the council members who was also a veteran, and say, "You and I were both trained to respect all people, and I don't care about anyone else's lifestyle, that's their choice." But the important thing is that he lied to the community. He denied saying these things, and only when he was caught in that lie did he actually admit it to the reporter. And he admitted it to the reporter, who shared this information with me, and said that he said those words out of a place of anger. And it wasn't until the following week that the reporter followed up with him about this story, that Mr. Seigrest changed his tune and said, "Yes, I said it, but I was genuinely concerned for his safety or his well-being." My primary focus here is on our students. What has initiated this drama? Has been initiated by three board members, who again, has been, has been referenced by community members tonight, in their insistence on renting a facility to an outside agency, even though a member of the board majority works for that particular agency, has a conflict of interest, despite the assertions of the board president directing our legal counsel to say otherwise. There is an active and open investigation by the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding that conflict of interest, because there is a sworn complaint. Parents were so upset that on January 18th, at the end of that meeting, well past midnight, before I could exit this room, they asked me, "How do we fix this?" And one board, one community member in particular asked me point-blank, "How do we get rid of Mrs. Torres de Seigrest?" Because all of this started by her. And I informed the members that they should continue to advocate for their students. All of these parents have children at the Adult Transition Center. But I also let them know that in California, you have the right to recall an elected representative if you feel that they are not representing your community or the best interest of the school district. Those parents made the decision to move forward with that recall, and I made one commitment to them. If they wanted to move forward with that recall, I would guide them through the process. This is not a process that I initiated against anybody. This is a process that was initiated by parents. When parents come after you and, and say they're gonna recall you, you should listen to them. You should take stock of what they're saying. And I think it's comical that Mr. Seigrest went and found a community member to collect some signatures and serve me with the notice, and then called me a liar, despite the fact that I had and continue to have those text messages from him, where he made those homophobic remarks towards me. More importantly, that Mr. Seigrest had the gall to go before the community in a public forum and deny making those statements, even though, again, I had those text messages. And only when he was caught in his lie did he try to change this story. And I am sincere when I say that he should resign. I do not have any confidence in David Seigrest to continue to represent our, our community or his constituents in the Almani City School District. I think any individual who makes comments like that towards anybody, and especially when they lie about those comments, should no longer hold any position of authority. It's unfortunate that we've gotten to this point, that there is such a lack of decorum, lack of integrity, and lack of trust. I will do what I need to do to maintain my good name. I have been in this community my entire life. I was elected to serve the students in the community of the Almani Union High School District. I will continue to do that. These attacks on me will not deter me from continuing to serve our students, particularly those who are most vulnerable, our special ed population. I want to thank the parents who are here tonight. I want to thank the parents who are here tonight, who continue to advocate for their for their students. I want to thank the community members who are here tonight, who continue to chastise the board for their poor decisions. And I make this commitment to you. If at some point you feel that I am not making the right decision, let me know. And until then, I will continue to move forward to support our students and to ensure that they receive the resources and the facilities that are rightfully theirs. That's all, Mr. Padilla. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Board Member Florencio Breonis. Uh, next, I'd like to call on, uh, the Honorable Professor Estela Torres de Seegrist.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to let you know that on Sunday, the nineteenth, I attended El Monte Historical Society. Our core m- meeting was there. As always, that meeting was excellent. The program was a wonderful program that I really enjoy a lot, the time that I was there. I've been a member of this, uh, the society, the historical society, uh, El Monte, uh, Historical Society Museum for many, many, many years. I can say almost thirty years or more, because this is a wonderful place that everybody has to feel very proud. Everybody who lives in El Monte, please visit that place, enjoy when we have the the teas. The teas are delicious. They are welcome. Everybody treats you are very nice, and the program that they present is wonderful. That day again, I was very happy to be there. I had to leave early because that day was the day that we have the presentation of the WACS for Arroyo High School, and I promised that I was going to be there because I promised the parents, as I always follow the parents, when the parents want me to represent them, especially for the education of the children, of their students. Yes, I pay attention to the parents, and the parents are the ones who guide me to decide what is the best for the students. I've been doing that for many, many years. The years that I've been being an educator, fifty-three years, and thank God, I've been having a lot of success helping my parents and helping my students. I was in that meeting, which was very interesting. Uh, Dr. Suniga was there and also all the representatives of our, uh, El Monte Union High School District, and we were talking with the people who came to make a study of our program in Arroyo High School. Seems that everybody was very happy with a lot of smiles, because the pro- El Monte, El, uh, Arroyo High School is in a good condition, and I know that he had success. And I hope that pretty soon, we are going to know the results. I was talking with, um, the same thing that I did with adult education. I was talking with the, um, the director, the director of the program, and they told me that they they were very happy with all the the all the program, that they got it by email, and they have everything really ready to give a good evaluation to our programs. I ask this because a long time ago, as I told you, my kids, they they are graduated from El Monte Union High School District, and I participated all the time in these kind of, um, programs that they had. And I remember that always parents were very important. Now, uh, also, I attend to the, uh, festival, the los, uh, the choir festivity that they have in Arroyo High School. My goodness, that was so beautiful, Dr. Suniga. It it was that all our high sc- the elementary schools that they they are feeding our high school. They were eighth graders. Those beautiful voices of the kids, the enthusiasm. I was talking with all the parents, and the parents were very happy to have this, uh, uh, this program, and, um, we, it was enjoyable, enjoyable. And, uh, would you please, I have to talk with Jennifer, our choir director in Arroyo High School. She's been doing this for a long time, and always we enjoy being there with them. Also, I attend the ribbon cutting for, um, El Monte, uh, Monte, uh, the Mountain View High School. It was beautiful. You were right. You were right, uh, Mr. Carlos Alcedo. The way that they express the beautiful program that we have there, the beautiful cafeteria that is wonderful. And finally, it's been ten years, ten years that parents constantly, you don't know how many parents have been close to me, asking me, "When are we going to have that 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 ready?" Well, now we have it, and it's a beautiful, beautiful place. I really congratulate our principal and, of course, El Monte Union High School District, all the work that he was done, very well done. Uh, Vialindo Cutting. I represented El Monte Union High School District. I brought our certificate recognizing that beautiful Vialindo, Vialindo, um, Vialindo District. For me, it brings me wonderful, wonderful memories. I attend that place for a long time. When we have our program that it was sort of the miss, and in the place where he had the center is the place that I remember that they used to have that place, and they always say that, uh, the, um, superintendent, Mrs. Uh, Ms. Lariche, Louise Lariche, she used to say, "One day, that place is going to be a great place, that for our children," and they made it. I think that she's feeling very proud now to see what a beautiful place is that. Uh, and it was very interesting to see all the people who attend there, and they were, we were enjoying our our day. Um, the other part of them that I attend, well, I attend the Laxta Academy Virtual Session. That was a beautiful program that is started last Monday. It's virtual. And one of the topics that I got is the, the Leadership Academy Session Number One. It was given the first one on Monday, April the third, twenty twenty-three. I attended on Zoom the first session at the Laxta Leadership Academy. It was truly wonderful. The main point was the student success must always be the main goal and objective of the school board and the superintendent. And this is, I'm very proud that even when all this drama, drama, and all these things that is being done and talking and talking about the problem, the problem that we have, uh, with our center in Rosemeat, it's been a drama. Nothing is done yet. Nothing, absolutely nothing. The only thing that we did was to stop the company, the, according to this, because they sent me the paper that it says that. No problem at all, okay? And the only thing that we did was to stop the DLR, DLR group, to stop, keep on doing the the program that we started. We spent money. Yes, we spent money. But before, we spent a thousands and thousands dollars in other things, and nobody said anything. And now because we stopped this, we haven't, we don't even have the solution. It's been a drama. It's been only criticizing everybody, because it's not done. It is going to be done, everything, after June. And we are not only the ones who are going to have the solution. We have all together that we have to see if we are going to keep this program, yes or none. But it's been a totally drama, ridiculous drama.
Excuse me, this is not a back and forth. If you don't stop talking, you need to leave. This is the Board of Education. Stop, please. Hold on. I'm going to remind the public. This is the Board of Education in public. I allowed for public comment. If you wanted to speak, you could have turned in a card. You didn't. This is not a back and forth. This is a time for the Board of Education to give our comments. So if you're going to stop, stop. If not, see your way out. Okay, I'm going to let Professor Torres de Seegrist finish her comments.
This Laxta program, I really enjoy listening to that. It took almost two hours. And yes, it was very important. It was a stress that the school board members mostly learn to function as a team in harmony, respecting and listening to one another and accepting all ideas. Suggestions as valid and worth considering. No one has all the answers. Together, we're going to have the answers, and together, we have to look for the welfare of all our students, absolutely all our students. In my mind, always, all the students, they have been with me. Even when I had the decision of having that center, because around seven hundred students from our El Monte Union High School District graduated from El Monte Union High School District, they were attending to that district. Parents talked to me. Unfortunately, I never got the telephone numbers of all of these parents, because they can and come and say, "What's happening?" They asked me that they would like to keep having the students in that center, because it was very close to their to their home, and they wanted the kids to go to go to college. That was my decision, but I never forgot my students with disabilities, never. Those students are very important, and I don't forget them, because we are going to give the best for them. After all this drama and all these things, blah, 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 that we have been having, I've been thinking about how we can help our students with disabilities. Our students with disabilities, it's time that they get into the society of our El Monte Union High School District. All our students have to take care of them. We have to love them, and we have to help them. And let's see, I've been thinking and I've been talking with, no, I haven't stopped it. No, no. I've been talking with several people, superintendents of all the other, uh, school districts who are helping me, uh, in the way that we can have a program that we have to help our students with disabilities. Those students are very important, as same as the students that are the regular. Well, the program was excellent. There is going to be another one. It's a serious programs that we are going to have, and I hope that our board members, I give you, I'm going to give you the the dates that they can attend. They can listen to that programs. They are really good, and we have to stop making drama and talking and taking things from another places. Let's concentrate in our students. Another part that I attended, of course, I attend, uh, attend yesterday to the beautiful modernization, the project moderni- the modernization project that we have in in South El Monte. That high school, I remember when that high school started. And now is one of, is one of the most beautiful house high schools, and the most beautiful thing are the students. You have to see those students, how much they love their high school. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Dr. Morales. You have been inculcating in your students the love for education and the love for the high school. Thank you very much. Mr. Padilla, that's all.
Thank you, uh, Board, uh, Board Member, Professor Torres de Seegrist. We're still on item seven, uh, Board slash Superintendent Announcement and Communications. Um, I would like to first thank you, Professor Torres de Seegrist, for, uh, standing in for me at two events, at the Vialindo event, for, uh, being there. Uh, with my absence, I I thank you for being, uh, president. At any time that I'm not there, I have full, you have my full support, and I have full confidence that you're able to carry that out. Not only did you do it at Vialindo, but I'd also like to publicly thank you for, uh, being at the groundbreaking and representing me at South Almani High School with the Modernization Project. Um, I know there's been so many activities. Uh, I want to make sure that I give kudos to Almani High School Open House. I know that, uh, both Professor Torres de Seegrist and I attended that, and, uh, it's it's always a pleasure to visit, uh, El Monte High School, uh, with Mr. Cuevas and his leadership and his students, and all the clubs that sell so much food, and, uh, there's just a lot of, uh, a lot of fun, uh, attending and listening to the choir and the band and the cheers, and it reminds us of, uh, why we're in, uh, why we're elected officials, uh, and representing a a school district. Uh, those students are just wonderful, uh, goal lions. I really enjoyed your open house. Also, to the Mountain View High School Vikings, uh, it was a pleasure attending the ribbon cutting, um, uh, the cafeteria project, cafeteria project, that, yeah, it took too long, ten years. I remember when the cafeteria burnt down, uh, ten years ago, when I first, uh, was a a new board member here in Almani Union High School District, but I love the design. I love how it's equipped uh, to allow for theatrical events and, uh, for performances, uh, to be done in that facility with, uh, with the seats. You feel like you're in a, in a movie theater, in a, in a really fancy movie theater, and it was nice seeing a little glimpse of, uh, uh, of the play Grease that they engage in doing. So congratulations to Mr. Banyas and all the staff there at Mountain View High School for a wonderful ribbon cutting. Thank you to the Culinary Arts Program that fed, uh, all of the visitors that were there. It was it was pretty amazing, and the students for being so welcoming and just so nurturing to everybody who attended. Also, um, thank you to all of our administrators and to Dr. Edward Zuniga for taking all of our administrators in a retreat where they were able to, uh, engage and partake in some professional development, not only to make themselves better professionally, but to create a plan, uh, in terms of, uh, what's to come in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Um, that that gives me great pride that we have that team cohesiveness in Almani Union High School District, where you're able to get away a little bit for, uh, for that. Um, in addition to that, um, yeah, there's just a lot going on. Uh, kudos to, uh, our CBO, Mr. Whale Elatar. I know that we have tons of construction projects at each of our sites, and it's great to see that we share the wealth and that we go around the district completing different projects for different schools, and that we don't just, you know, focus on one high school, but that we we kind of spread some of those those monies around so that all of the communities in our different districts, uh, can take, uh, can heal, can feel pride in their district and their high school. Um, and then lastly, I just want to say that, you know, w- we talk about a lot of lies and we talk a lot about a lot of drama, uh, but one thing that's not drama and it's not a lie is the fact that, uh, this Board of Education did censure Mr. Florencio Breonis on February eighth. Uh, don't be fooled, and, uh, you know, we can talk about all this smokescreen, but the reality is that he was censured. As a matter of fact, he said, uh, "You know what? You can, you can frame it for me, and I'll put it up in my office or in my room." Uh, you know what? I I will go and and take it. I've got a copy right here that I'd like to put back into the district, uh, Dr. Edward Zuniga. And if he want, he wants it framed, uh, please frame it for him. That's at his request. If you go back and look at the record, uh, that's what he wanted, and he said he'd take pride in that. So in there, we did say, you know, what a liar he is, where he tries to impersonate people at city council meetings.
Where is your proof?
And, uh,
Where is your evidence?
All of those things that that he says.
Unsubstantiated lies.
The community knows that he's a liar, and he can't get away from that.
Where is your proof?
And, uh, we'll go ahead and put that.
Where is your proof?
I will be moving right along.
Thank you. Where is your proof?
I also have a letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission. Uh, and this was, uh, mailed out to, uh, Mr. Paul Arellano regarding his FPPC complaint, number COM dash zero one two six two zero two three dash zero zero one eight two, and it also gave a copy to Estela Torres de Seegrist, and we refer to it as the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission, and, uh, they are the following. The Fair Political Practices Commission is a five-member, independent, nonpartisan commission that has primary responsibility for the impartial and effective administration of the Political Reform Act. The Act regulates campaign financing, conflicts of interest, lobbying, and governmental ethics. The commission's objectives are to ensure that public officials act in a fair and unbiased manner in the governmental decision-making process to promote the transparency in government and to foster public trust in the political system. Again, they are better known as FPPC, Fair Political Practices Commission, and this was a, like a, a special treat, because it came on April third, which was my birthday, so this was really special. Says, "Dear Mr. Arellano, the Fair Political Practices Commission enforces the provisions of the Political Reform Act found in Government Code eight one zero 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 ETSQ, as well as Government Code ten ninety. This letter is in response to the sworn complaint you submitted to the Enforcement Division of the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding the above-named individual and potential violations of Government Code ten ninety. You allege that Mrs. Torres de Seegrist violated ten ninety by participating in a January eighteen, two thousand twenty-three vote by the Almani Union High School District to terminate a contract with the DLR Group for architectural and engineering services for the District Adult Education and Transition Center. Your complaint alleges improper activity that has yet to occur. You allege that board, that the board voted to terminate the DLR Group contract and allow Pasadena City College, PCC, Ms. Torres de Seegrist, employer to renew its lease in June, two thousand twenty-three." However, the decision made by the Board on January 18, 2023 did not include a vote regarding the PCC, regarding PCC renewing their lease since the lease is not set to be renewed until June 2023. Please note that the Enforcement Division does not have the authority to prevent a public official from making or participating in a future decision or future contract. I will repeat, please note that the Enforcement Division does not, N-O-T, have the authority to prevent a public official from making or participating in a future decision or future contract. Since there is no violation, no violation of the Political Reform Act or Government Code 1090 at this time, we are unable to initiate any investigation and therefore the Enforcement Division will not pursue enforcement action in this manner. If you have any questions, please contact Tara Stock at T Stock, S-T-O-C-K, T Stock at F, at FPPC.ca.gov. Again, that's T as in Tara, S-T-O-C-K at FPPC, which is Fair Political Practices Commission.ca.gov. Sincerely, Christopher B. Burton. Christopher B. Burton is the Acting Chief Enforcement Division. So I'd like to enter this into the record, Dr. Edward Zuniga, if you could please take a copy of this.
Here, I'll take it.
It's okay, Dr. Zuniga, can you please come get it?
So interestingly enough, if you can read between the lines.
Yes, okay.
And there's no enforcement yet.
Here's a copy of the, the.
I mean, that's for me, I'll take that.
The censure of Mr. Florencio Breones.
Yeah, I asked for you to sign it two months ago.
Oh, my signature's in the back.
I'll take it.
There you go.
Give it to me, Eddie.
So with that, that concludes my, my Board Member comment. And again, I allow everybody to speak their part without interruptions. But next I'd like to turn it over to Student Board Member Ruben Carrasco.
Wait, just to make sure, Dr. Zuniga, or?
I have just a couple of updates before we get to our student, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I just, Dr. Zuniga, I would like for Ruben Carrasco to go first because I want you to go at the end because there's several stuff I want you to cover at the end.
Got it, go ahead. Right? Thank you. So I just want to start by reading a communication I received from my fellow student. So this student is Samantha Perez, she's a student at South El Monte High School and she wrote, Hello, my name is Samantha Perez and the points I wish to talk about today are security and violence, specifically how we need, need better and more experienced security, but also how we are left fending for ourselves in situations like this. An example being some of the fights at my school. There was a fight between several girls that lasted around six minutes and it took a very long time, as you can see, for security to get to the event. Even then, they were too afraid to do something in fear that they may touch a girl in a wrong manner since the security were men and the fights were between girls. Then there was another fight that happened this past Monday. It was between two boys and once again, security was nowhere to be found. I understand there's a lot of ground to cover and there's only so much security to go around, but we as students shouldn't have to look for security. They should be, they should be wandering the halls rather than just staying in one spot. As I witnessed this fight, I felt helpless and like I couldn't do anything. I completely froze. It shouldn't be the student's job to break up the fight. That fight was broken up by a TA thanks to another student. There have been many, there have been instances where a spectator of the fight was dragged in and forced to get involved. March 22nd was another event that should never have happened. For those who don't know, it was a stabbing at my school. The camera showed that security was nowhere to be found. This problem has not happened once, but on several occasions. It is sickening to know that many times one problem can happen before actually doing something about it. Does it really take a student to literally be under a knife to fix this problem? This student was around my age and this all happened during a passing period. The fact that I was close to where it happened shows how easily I could have been involved in it, not by choice, but by force. This is a school where I should feel safe, not like I'm in prison, bowed to be shanked. It shouldn't be like this. The worst shouldn't have to happen in order to, for, the worst shouldn't have to happen in order for change to occur. And for what? For it to be like this for only two more weeks? I am in and I am out of this school and know how it works. Everyone and everything goes back to its old ways. This is a never-ending cycle that will only continue if you allow it to. All these fights have happened within the time period of a month. This is why my proposition to you here today is to keep coaches as coaches and get security who is properly trained and knows what to do in situations like this. I know you say that you care about our safety and are trying to help, but you have done nothing. You have simply just heard us out and it is as if it goes through one year and now through the other. I understand you may be thinking, who is this high school student to tell us, to tell us what we have and haven't done? Well, the only reason I can say this is because I haven't seen any changes. I haven't seen you do anything prove to me that you truly care that our safety is at the forefront of your to-do list. At the end of the day, I can leave with a clean conscience, knowing that I did my part and didn't sit around watching someone else do it for me. The blood of another student will be on your hands, not mine. Do your part. Help us get better and more experienced security and don't have to fend for ourselves. So just reiterating, that is a communication I received from a student at South El Monte High School, Samantha Perez. Moving on to my portion, what I wanted to just quickly go over. I do want to commend Dr. Zuniga for extending invitation for the eco-friendly transportation meeting that we had. It was Wednesday, March 29th. Ms. Martinez, she was from VMA Communications. She kind of directed and hosted the event and, you know, quickly Dr. Zuniga, like, at the end of the meeting, I turned to a student and that was one of the more engaging meetings I've been at, right? Wouldn't you agree? It was because, you know, and please remind me the sketch comedian's name that was also there. The sketch comedian or the one, the, the one that would design or draw the? Yeah, Lalo Alcaraz. Man, he is something else. He's incredible, he's incredible thing for our community. And, you know, having all the students in that room talk about ways that we can make our community more aware about, you know, environmental problems, right? And having students just feed off one, feed off of one another was amazing. And if you ever have that in the future, I recommend anyone, any, I mean, you guys to attend as well because truly I was sitting in that room and I was inspired, right? This is amazing, so just thank you and, and thank you for that. Moving on to the, another thing I wanted to cover, we are having a Leadership Development Day coming up. We are looking into April 21st, which is the Friday after spring break. So what, and it will be hosted at La Desma High School. It's an event that will take place from nine to, we're looking from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM. And what that day entails is basically a day where we were able to bring together our ASV classes from, from all our six high schools and have a day full of activities that help reinforce team building activities. As well as we are extending the invitation to 50 students from surrounding middle schools, right, Dr. Zuniga? If I'm mistaken, right? So we are, you know, taking care of our young ones there as well. Another thing I wanted to cover, you know, as we get closer and closer to the end of this year, you know, my term comes to an end, so we are looking to re-elect or no, not re-elect, elect the new Student Board Member officials, so we are looking into that already. Lastly, not lastly, second to last, I quickly wanted to go over something and I only wanted to go over this because when it happened, I got a response from students, or I mean peers of mine. And that was about an article that was published on the San Gabriel Valley Tribune about Mr. Torres de Segres. And when it was brought to my attention from my peers, one thing that he said that it looked bad. It looked bad for the district. And I mean that because Mr. Torres de Segres has close ties to the Board through Mrs. Torres de Segres. And they said that it looked hypocritical almost, especially because as a board, we do try to push for LGBTQ+ initiatives, right? So again, only trying to communicate what they told me and how they feel about that. Lastly, last thing I wanted to cover really quickly was about the drama portion. I mean, I just want to say this on the record. I wouldn't label it as drama. And I, I'm saying this because I've had a lot of feedback from our students and a lot of, a lot of pushback from them not wanting to come up to the Board and do a public comment or speak to you guys, right? And when we label it as drama, it almost, it feels like we're almost downplaying their role as, as part of their civil engagement role, right? And their voice as well. You know, I think drama carries a very bad negative connotation to it, right? I mean, after all, it is our job to hear what they have to say. Because I wonder, and, and I want to reiterate what Stephanie Vega said earlier. You know, we serve them, it's not the other way around. And lastly, I just quickly wanted to go over something that was said anonymously. And again, you know, I'm playing my role as a student and trying to give you guys how the students always feel. And I found it funny, a student came up to me and I'm, I'm keep them anonymous because I'm not sure if I can use their name for this. They said that they were disappointed, okay, sorry. They tuned in to last week's meeting, no, last meeting through the YouTube stream, right? And they said that they were disappointed that there wasn't much fighting going on, right? And I found it funny because is that the new norm that we want to set? Is the new norm, you know, that someone tunes in through YouTube and they see us fighting, right? And or that they're looking forward to us fighting? I don't think it should be that. And just again, just telling you guys the precedent you guys are establishing, you know, through these online forums and this online presence as well. But that mainly concludes my portion or that does include my portion and thank you.
Thank you for your Board Member communication, Mr. Ruben Carrasco. Next, and I purposely put Dr. Edward Zuniga at the end because there are some specific topics that I wanted him to, to speak about. And this is the Superintendent, Dr. Edward Zuniga, and what we've got going in the El Monte Union High School District. Dr. Zuniga?
Thank you, President Padilla. This is my Superintendent's update for April 4, 2023 to the Board of Trustees. Typically, I'd like to give an overview of our last month's success and pluses and things that we're working on. This time around for the option for April, two important matters here that are serious in nature, but also something that's important to our students, to our staff, to our parents overall. So the first one, you saw that two of our students that were here during public comments to share their part in supporting not only Child Abuse Prevention Month, but also integrating grooming awareness for all of our high school students within El Monte Union High School District. These students have been working since last spring, meeting with myself and also with our Director of People Support Services, Mr. Alejandro Leon, our school team, including our principal and some of our teachers and counselors to come up with ideas on how to raise awareness of not only the Child Abuse Prevention Month, but also an interest of, a topic of interest to our students there at Rosebead High School, focusing on grooming awareness and prevention. When we created this initiative, my focus was more on, this is, would be a district-focused initiative, not a school initiative, because I feel it's important to make sure that all students are informed about the concerns that our students are sharing. What kids are sharing at Rosebead High School is also being shared across the district too. With that said, this was again, a recognition of what April is. This is on the regular agenda item for a Child Prevention Month, which is traditionally celebrated or recognized, excuse me, for the month of April in the United States. We know that the pandemic during that time when students remained on campus, according to the resolution, there was a decline in child abuse reporting. A lot of kids were home. So who typically does the reporting? Happens either at the school, either at a facility where we have mandated reporters and that's our job to do that. So that was also alarming too, to see that, that students and children depend on adults such as us as educators to make sure that they also are cared for in a different form as well. So I wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments that were done throughout the Student Voices Group. And one of the things that we talked about, let's see if I get my clicker. I'm clicking my computer while I should be clicking the clicker here. Touch on that first slide, I already had touched on that. So what I want to introduce is the Awareness and Prevention Month and look at data and why we're having the discussion about these two topics. Number one, we know that every nine minutes, Child Protective Services substantiate or finds evidence for a claim of child sexual abuse. Every nine minutes, that's alarming for us. This is based on the data that we received here. The middle portion, when we talked about who are these perpetrators according to the statistics and looking at that graph is the majority are acquaintances. That could be a family member, but that's the own separate category. But that includes every person that a child knows through their life experiences. So that's quite a large number there too. So the total in that range there is quite alarming. And then the last one on the victims under 18, two of the three are ages 12 to 17. That represents our high school students. So again, you want to keep that in mind, that, that range of under 18, the proportionate amount is under that amount. There you go, thank you. So my turn now is to again, focus on the interest that though child abuse is critical and important for our students is more related to raising awareness about the definition of grooming and also the prevention of what students can do. And also as adults, be aware of what the grooming process is. In here. Again, while we're talking about this, I believe I touched on this, I'll skip the slide here. And I won't read everything, but we have the tendency to understand what grooming is, sometimes in a positive way, that we groom our children to be ready for school for the next day, make sure that they're taken care of, they're well, well cared for. That could potentially mean some type of definition of grooming, but what we're talking about is known as actual sexual grooming. Grooming that is inappropriate when it becomes, when the students are affected or child is affected. It also involves some type of behavior from a perpetrator or sometimes as we know adults. It could be also student to student, but we want to focus on what the student interest is more specific to adult grooming. And in this case, we have a couple of things that we are going to provide to staff and also as the students mentioned, educate our students, but also staff members about what they can do to support the grooming prevention. These topics here for how grooming happens is very important. It can provide background on what signs are shown when it does happen and how it appears. Family and community, this could be any person. It could be someone at school, it could be someone at home, it could be a relative. So raising awareness of family and community. We know the majority of us, a lot of us here, including our parents, are good people, good intentions. And again, it doesn't discriminate, it could be identified as anyone. Takes a time, takes time and it's subtle. We know that grooming is not overnight. There is specific things that have been researched about the strategies and the steps that used that if the perpetrator is doing this, there are some things that are, are taking place behind the scenes. And then using subtle tricks and tactics that includes, you know, buying presents. Also it can include brushing against physically, which is, you know, it's known as more friendlier. Those are all specific tactics that we're talking about. So we intend to see this typical pattern based on research about the groomer. And then we wanted to also demonstrate what grooming can be, can look like. Again, those will be also featured as part of our presentation. And then preventing grooming, what students can do to ensure that they're not in a situation. So if something is, someone approaches them or shares specific things, those are things that students can say, uh huh, that, that looks like what we were referring to in this presentation. And then we also wanted to inform our students of their personal rights, including their own body, their own physicality, that's their own personal space, as well as signs for reporting and when they should be reporting to a trusted adult. So we all also know that students on campus have relationships with our counselors, with our teachers, our staff members, our administrators that are known as trusted adults. Those are the folks that we can confine in and believe in for reporting purposes. And then last but not least, the resources that are not only locally, but actually at the national level. The campaign, the campaign features for us to launch Know Something, Say Something. The pinwheel represents a sign of innocence. So the students selected the actual color as well as the pinwheel. Number one, the color for the student of Child Abuse Prevention Month and the pinwheel as a sign, right, obviously of innocence of child, of children. And then that is what the students will ring. If you didn't see our student wear that T-shirt, those will be shared to all the school sites along with these posters that you see on the side with the resources that we provided, not only locally, but also numbers to contact and also they can refer to. There is a QR code missing on this poster, but the QR code will also lead to the district's anonymous reporting. to further align all the anonymous reports to our catapult system or our district's information system that receives any type of formal, either concern or complaint through the system here. They also have pins provided, I mean, the buttons for the students to promote along with posters, signage, and also this information that they're here as well. So that will be going out to all the schools tomorrow to our school administration to provide to our students and our student leaders to promote the child abuse prevention, but also raising awareness of the grooming information that we're receiving here. And presentations will also be provided to staff. These are some of the resources that we're, we refer to, but also where to go to for help. We know that not only reporting, but also personnel and people that we can get support from, from the school site to also other resources that are either county-based, state, or nationally known. The other item that I wanted to also express and share is the the school safety, and which one of our students in public comment made reference to, but also one of the students that provided information to our student board member about his concern, his or her concerns related to the school safety, specifically to the incident on March 22nd with two students involved. This deeply impacted the school community, also affected our parent concerns. And we had the opportunity to, after the actual incident on March 22nd, to meet with our parents three times, one that very same day with the school principal. And also, this following day, I met along with the school principal again on two occasions at 9:00 a.m. We held a parent morning meeting for our parents who are available and also evening parent at 5:00 o'clock. Each parent, each parent meeting, probably for a total of 175 parents involved for those three meetings, and which lasted about two, two and a half hours each meeting. We did a lot of listening, we did a lot of answering specific questions through protocol, to safety plans, to procedures from the site level to the district level. But also understanding parent concerns about how we can improve our procedures when it comes to student safety on campus. As the students have mentioned, one of the priorities that we all have is the safety of students. If students don't feel safe, then they're not able to focus and learn. So here is a number of concerns and requests from the meeting's house from South Almonte High School parents. And my commitment to the parents was to provide the board with information about our meetings and inform them about such concerns and requests. And that is my due duty to the board as I represent. So for bullet number one, rising number of students fight on campus. That was something that was expressed through conversation by some of our parents that it's not only this incident, there there appears to be a sense of rising conflicts of student to student conflict on campus. The second point, continuous reports of vaping, smoking, and fights in the student restroom, which deeply also is not only has caused some tension, but also affected students not wanting to use the student restroom for this reason. There was reports from parents that their own children have said, you know, I'd rather wait till the end of the day to go home and use the, use the restroom. Or some also responded by, I've, you know, I've requested to use the office restroom because I don't feel comfortable going to the restroom as well for student restroom. So those are things that parents were concerned about, and it's not only the health of their students for not, for holding and not going to the restroom, but also having to pivot to go to another restroom that is not the student restroom. Third point, limited number of personnel responsible for supervising the campus. This makes reference to more specific to, they see them as security guards, but we know them as campus supervisors, but that was a point they brought up. They understand a lot of them are part-time positions and also that there's been a lot of turnover in those positions. Little to no supervision of students after school and evenings. This led to more deeper conversations, just in general, about supervision. A lot of their children either stay after school for programs, for the library tutoring, or even for athletics. And after the athletic competition, which they're under the care of their coaches, they wait outside. Sometimes they have to wait an hour, half hour for their ride home. So that raises concern about, no one is there specifically assigned to the supervision of students after school or directly over the campus as well. Next point, we have concern over timing of school to home communication. Our parents express concern about timing and how worried they become when they start hearing the news about a specific incident on campus and they have not received anything from the school itself. And that was such a concern about how much time it takes to prepare the messaging and everything else. So they wanted a quick solution to alerting when a school has a serious issue on campus. The other item is concern over release dismissal and parent-student unification. As you know, that day, there was an early release dismissal to allow the sheriff's deputy continue their investigation as students were confined to their classrooms. So there was a rainy day, we get that that point as well. That was a very challenging time to even unify those students as they were exiting onto the parking lot area and the street to get picked up by parents as well. The request, the next item, request for increase in personnel to monitor the campus, including all restrooms. Request for a parent volunteer group to assist in the supervision of students during the instructional day. They have seen this at some of their elementary school districts. They say that there are enough parents that can volunteer to help supervise a school day, and they would like to see this as part of this district. Request for more information on onsite support for students dealing with depression or anxiety. There is some awareness that there are services, but they feel that the district could be more proactive in communication, promoting, ongoing about the services that students can be provided onsite to address or SEO, social emotional learning and needs. The request for establishment of metal detectors on every point of entry on campus. There is board policy related to the use of metal detectors for student use or any occasion that we do have. I did express to the parents that we do have have utilized the metal detectors for specific functions, especially when there are guests attending dances outside the campus or on campus, specific, for example, proms, et cetera. The last item, I believe, is the request for a simple way to communicate when emergencies occur on campus. And that is more specific to, I, everybody uses cell phones at this time, I mean, the majority of us. So a simple, simple message of, who is locked out, more information to come. That is it. They wanted something that would be quick so they can be alerted. I took the opportunity to look at our Youth Truth results that we have received, and we are obviously disaggregating the information. But one of the things that YouTube does to ask students is how, how safe they felt during school. There is some also historical data on this chart. The top portion is from a comparison from this year, which is our district in February. That's when we started the survey. And it includes last year's, previous year in 2021, and also 2020. And you also see a, what they call a typical, a Youth Truth school. That means all the schools that have responded to the actual Youth Truth survey across the nation. What I also am interested in is how does our community compare, which Mr. Padilla had also had mentioned about the community we serve under a high poverty school level. So that is a percentage on average for any of our schools that participates throughout our nation, again, that are identified as a high poverty school. So one of the interesting factors is as overall, our students this year responded at a 50% where they feel safe during school. In past years, it has been greater than that, if you can see those percentages. And then at the bottom part, you see the actual subgroup by school site. So we have high feel safe during school and the percentages that students responded to at their individual school sites. Again, highlighting some of the recent incidents about school safety nationwide. And we have heard of school walkouts, one last nationally last Friday, one on Wednesday to address gun violence on, in schools. The pandemic and the issues that we are experiencing as students return onto campus. It is a different situation that we're dealing with than the pre-pandemic era, in my opinion. And there is a need of a stronger need to focus on what students and parents care about is their safety on campuses, too. So we have taken the initiative and the discussion, not only to address the March 22nd incident with conducting the actual district internal investigation about what occurred that day. But we also wanted to share things that we continue to evaluate over the last couple of weeks. Obviously, the internal investigation on the incident, the second bullet assessed the number of campus supervisors, both the part-timers and the full-time positions that we have for school site. We want to also look at returning what we, what we had pre-pandemic, the number of SROs to include one full-time SRO at all high schools. So there is presence of a school resource officer at every high school, including Fernando Arla Desma High School. One of the issues that we have experienced is, and it's not, no, no one's fault. It's more about the need and the current situation with Almonte Police Department where there is a shortage of police officers, which they're working on, and they're hoping to hire replacement or new police officers this spring to increase the actual unit itself for the Almonte Police Department. So we're hoping that our wish is to return to having one assigned per school so we are not sharing amongst the city of Almonte schools, which represent four of our high schools. The plan for parent outreach and volunteer opportunities for monitoring campus. I wholeheartedly agree with parents, not only promoting parents to be involved, but also anything that they can do to support us and our campuses, including addressing safety. I'm more than open to that, I think, something that we can do. It's more about the process and ensuring that all of our parents understand the actual school environment and the responsibility to, of being a volunteer for our school district. The assess the needs for active surveillance of school cameras during the instructional day. We had a few questions about the cameras, and there was an understanding that the cameras are not being monitored during the school day. What I made reference to is that you are absolutely correct. They are not monitored every second of the day. They are an ongoing surveillance of recording for incidents that may arise on campus. And that has always been the case, although we have also increased the presence of cameras in the interior, as well as, as you know, the exterior of the campus, too. But that is a good point taken, and we're also taking a look at that as well. Improve communication on reporting of any suspicious activity or inappropriate behavior through district anonymous reporting procedures as well. So again, the parents would like to see that when there is communication to them. Number, number one, how soon they can get it, but also in different shapes and forms of communication. We learned that email, although it's an effective tool, that everyone is checking email due to work, due to ongoing responsibilities at home as well. The last, second to the last one, improve school to home communication. I'm sorry, I repeated that one already. The last one, to survey parents on safety initiatives, including the use of metal detectors as well. So that's something that we as a team here within our district is understanding the needs of all of our stakeholders, just like we do with our student Youth Truth survey and also our local control and accountability. Sometimes look at the school site staff surveys, parents' surveys can also help us in making key decisions and understanding what their needs are and concerns are. Not only safety, but also other factors that support schools. So that is a summary of what we have reviewed and discussed and listened to our parents and also in working with our district teams along with our school site administration.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards Zuniga, for your very thorough report and communication as superintendent of the Almonte Union High School District. One thing that I would like you to add on there is I know that in California, we also do the California Healthy Kids Survey. And I know, if I'm not mistaken, what grade do they survey Assistant Soup of Educational Services Larry Cecil? The California Healthy Kids Survey assesses or interviews our juniors? The California Healthy Kids Survey. I know that we do it in the elementary district, and I forget what grades it targets. Juniors, right? I would like to look at that, at that data. If you could share that with Dr. Edwards Zuniga to compile it, or you have it compiled already, just share it with him so that you can compare it to the Youth Truth data of our students being surveyed. And Youth Truth surveys more than just juniors, so I think that would help. So moving right along, I'm going to move on to item D, D as in David. Information slash presentation. Item number one, D1, Presentation on Almonte Union High School District 2023 Energy Progress Report from Southern California Regional Energy Network. Do we have a representative? Welcome. Thank you for being so patient. We had a lot of public comment and a lot of, a lot of stuff. So thank you so much for, for your patience. Slide click.
I got it right here.
Just be patient with it. Tonight, the mic and the clicker have like just gone berserk today. I was like, we need a new mic and a new clicker.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, School Board, District Administration and audience. I would like to introduce, my name's Lena Luna, Facility and Energy Manager with the School District. And I would like to introduce our, a partner with the School District. We've been working with them for about four years now, right? When I came on board, brought them on from the local government world. And so we're reinvesting in our community through that little public goods charge you pay on your Southern California Edison bill and Southern California Gas Company bill. We're basically, that's how they're funded. So we're bringing that money back into our community, and they help with projects. And they've done a tremendous amount of work, so she'll go over that. So I would like to introduce.
Now I know why all the gas bills and the, and the light bills have been so high, right?
Bring that back to our community, you know? So it's been the support of everyone here, so I really appreciate that. I would like to introduce Mara Connolly from the Southern California Regional Energy Network.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So yeah, I'm here from the Southern California Regional Energy Network, or SOCalREN. And I am presenting on the progress report, so just kind of giving you all an update on what we've been working on. Lena is the district's energy champion, so we've worked really closely with Lena for the past four years, as I said, doing all sorts of fun projects. So just a little context on who we are. We were established by the California Public Utilities Commission, and we are trying to help the state reach its energy goals. So we do this by working with all the different sectors. I'm here working with public agencies, so that includes cities, counties, water districts, and school districts. Our goal is to help these public agencies from start to finish implement energy efficiency projects. We recognize energy may not be a top priority for all these different districts that obviously have a lot going on, as I've learned tonight. So we want to be as supportive as we can. So as soon as an agency gets enrolled with us, we do some benchmarking, kind of look at what your current energy usage is. And then we narrow in our focus to see what can we change? Where are the opportunities? Out of all the buildings in the district, what one should we focus on? So we help with the calculations, we help with the audits, and we can help up to construction as much as we're needed. So Almonte Union High School District currently has five projects that are right in between construction and completion, and then additional project that's in talks that we're hoping might be on the horizon. This is just a little quick glance at some of that initial benchmarking data, so we can give you this kind of data if it's of interest. This is when you all started in 2019. We looked at a whole bunch of different schools and buildings in the district. We looked at what energy is being consumed. So those dark bars are the electricity and the gas, and then the green bars. And then the green bars is how much you're spending on energy costs. So we know money is a big motivator, and we want to help with that and help bring those costs down and find financial incentives along the way. So where are we today, four years later? This is our leaderboard, so we work with all of Southern California, anyone who's served by SCE or SEG. So out of all of these school districts that are listed there, El Monte Union High School District, I'm excited to say, is in fifth place right now in terms of percentage of annual energy savings since their enrollment in two thousand nineteen. So that's a really big deal. You all should be very proud of that. We serve a lot of districts, a lot of agencies, and we're very excited about El Monte Union High School District and all of the projects that are going on. So what those projects are, the one that's planned, it's in talks right now, would be a project at the district office. And so those are some of the cost savings. That's the money that you would save on your energy bills every year. And then we break down that energy savings, KWH, that's what electricity you're spending, thermes, that's how much gas is being used. And then those incentives, those are additional cash incentives on top of the money you're saving on your energy bills. In progress, like I mentioned before, we have five projects that are wrapping up. So those are at Arroyo, La Desma, Rosemead, El Monte and South El Monte. So bringing your attention to those total numbers, they're pretty fancy, almost a hundred and forty, over a hundred forty five thousand dollars are being saved annually. And then we can have nine hundred and fifty thousand KWHs and over twelve hundred thermes can be saved as well if all six projects are completed. These are big numbers. We're really excited about them. We've been talking about this district a lot, as I'll show you later. But just a brief overview of what's been going on, you were enrolled in two thousand nineteen, kind of immediately got started, started planning those projects. We got board approval in June two thousand twenty one, so thank you very much for that. Construction wrapped up last fall. And so we're just kind of waiting for commissioning, for those final signatures, final reports to finish before we can do a year full of data to really measure out exactly how much energy is being saved. And that will determine those cash incentives. So on top of those energy cost savings at the top, there will also be cash incentives coming for each of these projects. Like I said, we've been talking about you all a lot, and that's why I'm here tonight to make sure that you are all aware of these really great success stories that are happening. So El Monte Union High School was featured in the SUL Cal Ren newsletter recently and is also featured on our website right now. So I definitely encourage you to share this out with your networks. It's a really great recognition. We use this as a case study when we're talking to other agencies and other school districts, kind of is a really great example of what can be done. So thank you for your support in making these projects happen. Also, a big shout out to Lena. They've been a huge asset for us. Lena is a really easy energy champion to work with. They know districts super well, they're very motivated. We've learned a lot from Lena, just as much as, you know, they've been working with us through this whole project. It's been very collaborative. And so SUL Cal Ren voted to have Lena focused as a face of SUL Cal Ren in January. So very proud of Lena as well. So just to wrap things up, what's coming ahead? We're looking forward to completing those five projects, getting those incentives coming. We're always interested in, you know, starting new projects. So we want to keep that district office project on the horizon. Always looking for funding opportunities. Lena is very on top of that as well. So, you know, we've got funding opportunities. We're looking at the Cal shaped money that's coming down the line, always staying aware of what's happening at the federal level. And then we're also excited that El Monte Union High School District is working with us on an energy resilience action plan. So kind of thinking ahead, if there's a climate disaster, if there's a power outage, what can the community do? Where do they turn? Is the city, is the district ready for those events? So SUL Cal Ren is here to help you all. We are totally free of service, and we're excited to keep this partnership going. That's all I have for y'all tonight.
Excellent. We'll see if any trustees have any questions. Board member Florencio Bionis?
No questions. Thank you for your presentation.
No questions. Board member Carlos Alcedo?
Yeah, no comments, no questions.
No comments, no questions. Professor Torres de Segres? All right. So I have a question. Go back to first place, second place, third place, fourth place, fifth place. Okay, you know I'm going to ask. So how come we have no numbers there? Is it because our five projects haven't started? Or I know you have data for forty four percent, thirty two percent, nineteen. And I got to ask, who's fourth place?
Um, you know, I'd have to go back and look at the full report for that.
Okay, because I was like, wait, who's fourth?
You weren't in the top three, and I knew the question would come, well, where are you?
Yeah.
So you are in fifth place. You do have some savings coming in. Once they're finally complete, we'll get those final numbers.
Okay.
So next year, you know, maybe we'll be back with an update.
So those districts have been with you longer. That's why you have all their data all complete. So we have to go through our six projects for them to, for you to crank out those numbers for us?
Yes.
Because I guess my question is, then how do you know we're in fifth place?
We have, we predict the numbers, you know, what we're estimating for those savings to be. So we do have some data that we can share with you. They're just not as high as those agencies. It's not always, you know, length of time. Sometimes it just depends on how big the district is, what the projects are, how big the energy savings are, so.
Okay, cool. Yeah, that would help because that was my next question is, what is their enrollment? Our enrollment is about seven thousand. So, you know, putting air conditioning and heating for seven thousand students, it's going to be very different from some neighboring districts that might have twenty three thousand or or more than that. What, what is the average enrollment for those districts? I mean, we're not a unified school district. We're only a union high school district. Are those fairly large districts? I have no idea.
I have no idea. There's so many. I couldn't really give you a broad answer for that. But I would say that number is coming from annual energy savings. So it's not as much about the number of buildings or the number of people. It's about the projects you choose and from when you start versus when you finish those projects, how much are you saving? So you're really kind of comparing against yourself to see, you know, are you saving fifty percent? Are you saving twenty percent regardless of the size?
So these are the numbers for construction projects? Or is it for, you know, monthly use in a high school district?
It's annual energy use.
So it's the construction and what we're using in the classroom and all of that?
Depends on what projects you choose. Yeah.
I'm a little confused now. So to me, turning on the lights is costing this district money. So does that data talk about consumption of energy on a daily basis in all of our classrooms throughout our entire district? Or is it just our construction projects? That's two different things, yeah.
I'm going to, so I'm actually a certified energy manager with Association of Energy Engineers, tech, very techie. But early on, I'm actually going to work with SUL Cal Ren because it's great to change the metrics. They typically work with local government. And I've been very vocal about ADA and designing. They typically use energy use intensity, so they look at total energy use, total cost savings, divided by building square footage. And I said, look, we're education, we serve students, and we really need to start changing the metric to be energy use per ADA or something like that. So I think that's a metric, and then that would help normalize this better than what we currently see here. So we have room for opportunity to change with the school districts. We've actually been the most vocal school district, right, with the agency?
We're always the most vocal school district. You should know that. So when you say ADA, are you referring to my ADA, like average daily attendance per student?
Yes, yes, yes. And to really, I think we have room for improvement to change these numbers for school districts, right?
Yeah, the number of districts you work with compared to cities and counties.
Yeah.
It's definitely a lot smaller.
So could we work on something for like another update next week? Let's do that.
We love data.
So, so I answer my question because I am truly more confused now. Is this, is this all of our, is this data that you're referring to here consumption in all of our school district? Because that's how I'm looking at it. As a board member, I'm looking at this like, wow, okay, they're going to crank out the numbers and they're going to tell me how much energy we're saving throughout our entire school district? Or are you telling me the projects? Because the projects and daily consumption are two different things. So which one is it? Please clarify that one for me. Or did you mix it?
I believe it's the projects.
Projects, okay. And that's what theirs is on the top too, projects, right? Okay, all right. I just wanted that clarified. Is that correct? Okay. So for me as a board member though, is how much is it costing our bill? In terms of, when I see a Royal High School, Almani High School, that to me is like, oh, that's how much they're consuming as a whole school. But that's not what this is. This is a project that we have at Rosemead High School or a construction project we have at Mountain View High School. Is that correct? All right, okay. Thank you guys for the presentation. Okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but as you guys were speaking, I'm like, okay, I got to ask this because where are we? But thank you guys for coming here and presenting, all right? I know there'll be another presentation, right, for more clarification right on. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Next item is item E consent agenda. Do we have any items that any board members would like to speak about separately? Board member Carlos Alcedo?
No questions.
No questions, okay. Board member Florencio Bionis?
Uh, yes, number twenty three.
Number twenty three, all right, number twenty three. We have Mr. Bionis. Okay, any others? Any others, Mr. Bionis?
No, that's it.
Okay, Professor Torres de Segres, are there any items that you'd like to discuss? Okay, and I don't have any items, so let's go ahead and move on to E, item E consent agenda. A number twenty three, board member Florencio Bionis. This is consider approval of board of trustees meeting calendar for the two thousand twenty three dash two thousand twenty four school year. You have the floor.
Thank you. Just a comment on this. So I think we had discussed this a few years ago that for all intents and purposes, we've been meeting twice a month now. Not just once a month in a regular meeting. I know we list the second meeting of the month as a special meetings. And so I was recently contacted by a member of the community who expressed some concern about those second monthly meetings, specifically that because they're considered special meetings, we only have to provide twenty four hour notice. And they felt that the content of the meetings is now routine in nature as opposed to special, that perhaps we should reconsider having special, quote unquote, special meetings the second Wednesday of the month and actually having just two regular meetings twice a month, first Wednesday and third Wednesday. So I did mention this to Dr. Zuniga when we discussed the agenda. And, you know, my, my thoughts are just, we can approve this tonight. I don't have any concern about this, but I think, you know, at some point we need to reconsider whether or not that second meeting is actually a special meeting now or it continues to be a special meeting or if in fact it really is a routine, regular meeting that should be agendized as such so we can provide seventy two hour notice to the community on the the agenda items. And that, that way they have the opportunity to review the agenda with some time. Just because I, you know, we're not, we're not violating the law by doing this, but I think we're definitely approaching perhaps violating the spirit of the Brown Act. And I did share with Dr. Zuniga, you know, if we don't need to have that second monthly meeting, then we can just, you know, announce that it's been canceled so that the community is aware. Those are my only thoughts on this particular item. Just something to put in everyone's mind moving forward when we adopt a future calendar or if we want to make amendments to this calendar later on in the school year. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like a motion. We'll go ahead and do that one, and then we'll come back to the rest. We'll go ahead and approve, or go ahead and, can I get a motion to approve? Consider approval of board of trustees meeting calendar for the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four school year?
Move to approve.
I got a, I got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Professor Torres de Segres. Any comments?
No.
Just a comment I wanted to make. I know that Mr. Queen Nguyen had talked about, talking. Oh, this is the, this is our trustee calendar, not our school calendar. I was going to talk about the lunar school year, Mr., not Mr., Dr. Edward Zuniga. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I'd like to move to approve items one through twenty four. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
We got a motion by, we got a motion by board member Florencio Bionis. We have a second by board member Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. At this time, we're going to move on to F, a regular agenda, F as in frank. Item number one, consider approval of the Citizens Oversight Committee annual written report for Measure D and Measure HS, general obligation bond construction projects. Can I have a motion to approve?
Is there a presentation on this?
There is. Oh, okay. I apologize, Mr. Edia. I apologize. Welcome. Dr. Zuniga, can we write like presentation next to it, you know, that way we know? I mean, I know the previous one, yeah. Thank you for being patient and sticking around, okay? Yes.
So introduction, this is the annual written report for the Citizen Oversight Committee for our bonds. And we are an independent committee. And the introduction is, and I believe you're getting copies of all this as well. So on January ninth, two thousand nineteen, the Board of Education approved the establishment of the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, COC, for Measure HS as required by Prop thirty nine. With this approval, the COC now oversees and reviews expenditures for both Measure D and HS. That we are a seven member committee with two alternates. The district has done its due diligence to facilitate meetings as required and meet on a quarterly basis in the two thousand twenty one, twenty two school year. Due to COVID, the COC conducted virtual meetings. Meetings were held on September twenty two, two thousand twenty one, January twentieth, two thousand twenty two, April fourteen, two thousand twenty two. For the twenty two, twenty three school year, we have resumed meeting in person following public health guidelines. The first meeting was held at Fernando La Desma on September twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two. We also met on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty three at Mountain View High School. Project site visits. This last year, we visited Fernando La Desma's school and took a tour to see the new multipurpose building, which was at about eighty seven percent complete on September twenty sec, twenty six. On January thirtieth, two thousand twenty three, the COC visited Mountain View High School and had an opportunity to see the improvement in the cafeteria. The bond expenditure overview, there are several pages with all those expenditures, all previous project expenditures for Measure D and HS, wherever you've reviewed with the committee, to river, you can refer to attachment A and B in really tiny, small print. So that's it. So we, as the co-chair, as the chair for the committee, we respectfully submit this report to you all.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments, board member Florencio Bionis?
No.
Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Alcedo?
No.
Any comments, Professor Torres de Segres? No, and I have no comments. So thank you for being so patient and for being the chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee. And also thank you to Ms. Norma Macias and Mr. Whale Alatar for facilitating and providing everything that they need so that they can conduct their job. Thank you very much, Ms. Kathy Edia. All right, so we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve and accept the Citizens Oversight Committee annual written report for Measure D and Measure HS, general obligation bond and construction projects. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Move to approve.
We got a motion by board member Florencio Bionis. We have a second by Mr. Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the report is approved. Item number two on F, regular agenda number two. Consider approval to enter into agreement with Converse Consultants to provide material testing and inspection services for the South Almani High School and Arroyo High School greenhouse projects. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move, move to approve.
Move to approve by Professor Torres de Segres. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by board member Carlos Alcedo. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is carried. Item F three, consider approval of an agreement with Rebecca Latta Consulting to provide certified arborist services for Arroyo High School modernization project design. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Move to approve.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do questions for Mr. Carlos Alcedo.
On this project, there are several trees that that are in question. Mature trees that have been there for decades. And this particular or these particular trees, the two cedars are very iconic to that area. uh, to that area, um, and this is, um, similarly, the, the live oaks that, that are popular, uh, in that North El Monte area, Temple City and Arcadia. Um, what is the goal of, uh, that we're looking at here? Is it to remove these, um, or is it to design around? Um, I'm curious.
Well, I think the goal is to assess if it's possible to save these trees, or these trees may be in a way, uh, impacting, uh, the new building that we plan to, to do. As you are aware, the Arroyo High School, uh, Modernization Project would actually include a placement of the administrative, administrative building. It will be in a different, not ex- in the same general area, but it's kind of gonna be, obviously, impacting the areas around it. So it is an assessment to try to preserve those trees if possible, and also...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And also, uh, review the, uh, the health of these trees as well.
Will we get a copy of that report?
Definitely.
Okay, and then just, uh, just to add to that, if we can get, um, if it's not included, uh, add pictures, so we can see exactly what we're talking about.
Will do.
Excellent. Any other questions from any, any other trustees? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, so, uh, it, it's been moved by, uh, board member Florencio Breones. It's been seconded by Mr. Carlos Alcedo, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, Consider Approval of Independent Contract or Agreement Between the El Monte Union High School District and Communication Solutions to Provide Independent Evaluations and Services. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, school board member Professor Torres de Seigres, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Contract is approved. Item number five, Consider Approval of Resolution Number Thirty-two dash twenty-two dash twenty-three for El Monte Union High School District Support of Voter Education Weeks. And our student trustee, uh, Mr. Ruben Carrasco ha- has asked for preferential voting. So you have the floor, Mr. Carrasco.
Thank you, I just wanna quickly highlight that, you know, the, well, I'm eighteen now, but the only reason I pre-registered to vote last year was because of this, so I'm just quickly highlighting it. So the goal is obviously to have more students, um, pre-registered to vote, so, um, that is the end goal. But I, now, I do have a question that I wanted to ask, and I came up with this question at the last psych meeting, but I forgot to ask it, and I'm gonna ask it. Really quickly, in, in order to amend, um, the website link of the government, um, that, that allows these kids to pre-registered to vote, can we add that to the, the clever portal that we have on our Chromebooks?
Absolutely, we can add that as, uh, um, one of the, the logos that has a link to the actual site to register for early voter when the students open up their Chromebook, that's what you're referring to, have it there? Yeah, that's a good idea, if, if we can certainly do that.
We, we had it before, I gotta double check, but there should be a little says "vote" on it, and then part of the promotion that will be sending out notices to all the schools' announcements about, please go online, you can be sixteen-year-old and register to vote, then at eighteen, you get to vote. So we're gonna make sure we promote that, um, during that week when we come back from spring break.
We'll work with Mr. Steelman, Information Services, to, uh, insert that link also on the Chromebook.
Okay, awesome, that works, um, that pretty much it, um, thank you.
Just one comment, correction, Mr. Cecil. You can re- pre-register and you can vote when you're seventeen in a primary election, as long as you're gonna be eighteen in the general. And I'm actually gonna bring this up in Roundtable, but, thank, thank you for, for mentioning that.
Pre-register in sixteen.
You can pre-register, yeah, and you can actually vote in a primary at seventeen, yeah. So...
Okay, awesome, so, uh, Consider Approval of Resolution Number Thirty-two dash twenty-two, twenty-three School Year for El Monte Union High School District Support of Voter Education Weeks. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by board member Carlos Alcedo, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, Consider Approval of Resolution Number Thirty-two dash twenty-two, twenty-three Regarding Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness. Uh, here again, our trustee, Mr. Ruben Carrasco, has asked for preferential voting. You have the floor, Mr. Carrasco.
Thank you, just a quick question for Dr. Zuniga. Um, just to clarify, so it started out as a thing at Rosemead Campus, and then it branched out to kind of a district-wide initiative, correct?
Yes, the, uh, initial discussion with, with the students from Rosemead High School, and my support was not only Rosemead High School, but I thought it was important to do a district-wide initiative.
Awesome, thank you, I'm just quickly clarifying that, um, but, you know, again, uh, because, and I think, Mr. Vida, you liked this portion. The, the young lady who actually did the public comment about this initiative, her name is Chelsea Ma, and she's actually, she comes from Burchell Elementary School, right? So I thought it was amazing to see, you know, um, incredible leaders that I met, um, back in middle school, grow and flourish into, you know, people who are really caring about our community. And quickly, uh, reiterating this, because we did discuss this at our last psych meeting, which was, uh, this past Monday, was that grooming aware, uh, grooming could take place, you know, in person, but it could also take online. It could also take place virtually or online, right? So again, you know, putting out there that component of it. And this is something new, right, but with Dr. Zuniga's help, of course, and then that amazing, uh, student committee, um, we do plan to put this forward, and, and again, just commending, uh, the student, Ms. Chelsea Ma, and plus the others that are part of that, that group, um, for really, you know, pushing for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, seconded by, uh, board member Carlos Alcedo. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, the resolution is approved. Item number seven, Consider Approval of Sixth Amendment to Employment Agreement for the Superintendent?
Move to approve.
I got a motion to approve by, uh, board member, uh, Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by board member Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, Review, Discuss, and Revise Administrative Regulations in the Five Thousand Series, First Reading. Any comments? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna go ahead and move on to item number nine, Review, Discuss, and Revise Board Bylaws, the Nine Thousand Series, First Reading. Any comments? Hearing none, moving right along. Number ten, Consider Approval to Reject All Bits for RFP, um, number twen- number two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three, P two, Moving Services for the South El Monte High School Modernization Project.
Hope to approve?
Move to approve by board member Florencio Breones, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carlos Alcedo, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now we're gonna move on to, uh, board member, or, uh, Board Agenda G, Roundtable and Closure of Meeting. Uh, item number one, Topics or Issues to Be Brought Forward for Future Agenda Items. Um, I'll start off with Mr. Florencio Breones, board member Florencio Breones.
Thank you. Two items that I wanted to, to bring to the board for future consideration. Um, the first one is, uh, yesterday, I was, uh, received a presentation from Senator Henry Stern's office regarding a bill that he is currently carrying. It's, uh, Senate Constitutional Amendment Two. And, uh, SCA two would amend, well, would ask the voters to amend the California Constitution so that the voting age would be lowered from eighteen to seventeen. The text of the bill only changes one thing, uh, Section Two of Article Two, uh, would state that a United States citizen who is at least seventeen years of age and resident in this state may vote. Um, this particular amendment would only apply to California elections, not federal elections, cuz that's, um, regulated by the US Constitution and the, uh, at the federal level. So, um, Nick Gaines, who is, uh, the legislative staffer who was carrying this bill for Senator Stern, gave a presentation, he shared a couple of things, one thing really stood out to me. So he obviously provided some background on, uh, when the last time the voting age was lowered in this country, and that was, um, when it was lowered from, uh, twenty-one to eighteen. And the big push for that was because during the Vietnam War, you had young folks who were being sent off, who were, who were, uh, drafted at, at eighteen, were being sent off to war. Many of them were dying, but they couldn't vote until they turned twenty-one. So they literally were, had no representation. And so, many individuals fought to have the voting age lowered from twenty-one to eight- to eighteen, and that's where it's been to this day. But the comment that, that Nick made that really stuck with me, uh, was when he talked about how so many students today continue to die without representation, not by war, but by gun violence. And he mentioned specifically, uh, protests that are taking place right now in Nashville, Tennessee, where students are literally protesting in the, the state house there, um, calling for their representatives to take action, but those students can't actually vote for those representatives because they're not eighteen yet. And so it, it really stood out to me that here in California, um, I think we generally, we, we, we already give, as we talked about earlier, we already give seventeen-year-olds the opportunity to vote in primary elections, as long as you're gonna be eighteen by the time the general election comes around. This would just make it so that if you're seventeen, you could vote, uh, in any state elec- state or local election. Um, he provided two pieces of data, um, to back up the particular bill. One, that, uh, in countries where the voting age has been lowered from eighteen to seventeen, the level of civic engagement has actually gone up, and the, um, propensity of an individual to continue to vote, uh, when they started at seventeen, actually increases. And more specifically, in some European countries where the age of, the voting age has been lowered to sixteen, that actually seems to be a sweet spot, where you get the most engagement from individuals at that age who then continue voting into their adult years. So what I would like to propose to, to the board is, if we would, uh, at a future meeting, adopt a resolution supporting, uh, Senate Constitutional Amendment Two, uh, supporting this particular piece of, uh, of legislation, uh, so that we take a position, particularly because we are a high school district, uh, where we serve high school students, many of whom, uh, are seventeen years of age and would be, have the opportunity to vote. Uh, I think it would be prudent for us to take a position supporting this particular piece of legislation. So that's my request to the board. And then, um, do you want me to go to the second item, or do you want me?
Yeah, it's, you have the floor, so yes, whatever items you'd like to be brought forward, or...
The second item, since we have already concluded negotiations with our staff, and we just approved the Sixth Amendment for our superintendent, uh, providing, uh, Dr. Zuniga with the, with, uh, a salary increase, I'd like to ask the board if, if there's any, um, interest in, um, providing, I think it's the maximum is five percent, if I'm not mistaken, for board members, um, five percent increase to our stipend, uh, for this year. So those are my two items that, uh, I'd like to have discussion on and see if there's consensus.
Alright, um, Mr. Salcedo?
I'm not opposed.
You're not opposed, okay. Um, I have to think about it a little more on both of those things, I'd like more time to think about it. I'm not ready to, uh, jump in on anything. I also would like my colleague, Mr. Qui Nguyen, to be part of this discussion. Um, so that's where I'm at, I, I need more time to think about it and, uh, see if I put it on the agenda. Professor Torres de Seigres?
Yes, I would like to think just a little more, especially the first, the first one. We need to think, to be very careful, be very, very careful with that. But we, I would like to think more about that and then bring it.
Sounds great. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Breones, uh, thank you for the points that you brought forward. Uh, Mr. Carlos Alcedo, do you have any topics, issues to be brought forward for future agenda items? None. Okay, Professor Torres de Seigres, you have any topics, issues to be brought forward for future agenda items?
Well, I would like to, I would like to, to talk about the rename, uh, the name of the, the SROs, that School Resource, um, Officers. If we can change it into SSO, School Safety Officers. Because the resource, that, that, the School Resource Officers, it, some parents doesn't understand very well what do we mean with resource. Seen, uh, but what, by the way, they said, what about safety? We need you to save our high schools. And that's the reason I brought this, I said, I will bring it to the, to the board and ask if we can do it, we can change it. I don't know if we, it's possible to do it, but instead of, uh, SRO to SSO, School Safety Officers, Officers, Officers. I don't know, would you would like to talk about that and see if it's possible to do it?
I would like to wait for Mr. Queen Nguyen to get back, so we can have a full discussion with the entire board. That's kinda where I'm at, uh, Mr. Florencio Breones?
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed in, in principle, but I mean, a, a name is just a name to me, so, but I'll, uh, you know, if we wanna have everybody chime in, I'll, I'll wait for Mr. Nguyen to return.
Okay, Mr. Carlos Alcedo?
I'm in board with that, I could wait to have that discussion with everybody.
Perfect, alright, um, in terms of topics or issues to be brought forward, uh, for me as the president of the school board, um, I would like to get an update on our School Resource Officers position, or our Student Safety Officers. Uh, where are we with that? I want a presentation, um, I would like for that presentation to be taken by Ruben Carrasco to the Student Advisory Committee to let them know, uh, where we are with that, you know, uh, how much it costs, uh, what the slowdown has been, that there haven't, there hasn't been enough trained officers, was my understanding that there, the, the academies are not cranking out enough trained police officers, and then the city also has a, a limit, and again, you can correct me on that, Dr. Zuniga, but a presentation on that, if you can collaborate with the, uh, uh, district, uh, not the district, but the city manager, uh, to get a report and make sure that our students, and have Ruben, you and Ruben, go back and, uh, give that presentation, and then give that presentation to us. I know that in the past, um, you know, I've been very vocal about the School Resource Officer position, and, and at one point, I did say, and you can go back and look, I did say a comment that I'm unapologetic about, and I said, "One of the stupidest things that board member Florencio Breones has ever done is to try to get rid of the, uh, School Resource Officer position," and I pressed him on that, and he made every kind of comment that I was just infuriated by, when he said that, you know, "Police cars and SROs make students nervous," and, uh, uh, I, I just didn't buy that. You know, our parents, uh, were surveyed, and the survey was, uh, conducted, and I would like for Dr. Zuniga to, you know, bring out that survey and share it with our students about what the parents of this community said, and how they stand with our School Resource Officers, and that, uh, School Resource Officers are what is right with our police department, or, not with our police, yeah, with our police department and with our community. They're not part of the problem, they are part of the solution, and they stand with us in solidarity in terms of keeping our students safe and keeping our staff safe. And, uh, I've said this, and I am unapologetic, for as long as I sit on this dais, I will put my money where my mouth is, and I will make sure that we have School Resource Officers, and I will use ev- all the power and authority that I have, um, and, and I hope that the rest of my colleagues will come along for the ride. And if you don't, shame on you, and I will call you out. So yeah, I want a presentation on that, and I want you to disclose how much money it is, in full transparency. Uh, in addition to that, I want you to, uh, name each high school, and I want you to put how many, uh, campus supervisors we have, how many are full-time, how many are part-time, you know, how much is that costing us, because I don't believe that there is a price that we can put on the safety on our students. Um, and, and I agree that, you know, there's, there's violence throughout, um, our world, our country, our, our states, our state of California, uh, today more than ever, and that we must do whatever is within our power to ensure the safety of our students. And I don't just say it as words, I say it as in, you know, we need to put our money where our mouth is. And, uh, it is our number-one priority, uh, to, uh, keep our students, um, safe, because that is the family's most precious resource and our most precious resource. And, uh, as a school board member, um, I always say this, and again, I am unapologetic about this. You don't need board members, you don't need, uh, superintendents, you don't need principals, you don't need teachers, you don't need support staff, if we don't have students. Students are the number-one customer, don't ever forget that, okay? That does not mean I diminish, you know, the, the, the authority of our teachers or the importance of our teachers, but our number-one customer, I remember having this big discussion and a battle with the guy, teacher from Rosemead that's no longer there, uh... a battle with the guy, teacher from Rosemeat, that's no longer there, about, about that comment and he told me, "You know, Mr. Padilla, I don't like the analogy that you gave that students are customers and that, you know, we're providing a service." And I told him, "You know what? We'll agree to disagree." Because the number-one customer is our students and our parents, okay? And the service that we provide is quality instruction. If the instruction sucks in our school district, that's when kids want to go and get inter-district permits and go to another district. I don't blame them. So I do have to look into what we're offering and into what we're doing. Do we have some amazing teachers? Yes, we do. But make no mistake, as far as I'm concerned, the number-one customer is our students and their parents because without them, we don't need any of us. And I am unapologetic about that. So if you get offended, so be it. I also would like to get a presentation from Mr. Larry Cecil. You know, I often get, we often get these beautiful presentations about MTSS and beautiful presentations on RISE. RISE is a acronym that stands for Ready to Influence Student Excellence. And what that is, is that is a process of regular education known as the SST process or the Student Success Team Process, which I'm very familiar with because I did it for over fifteen years. I can teach the class in it. And basically what that is, is a meeting of different professions, professionals, it's a multidisciplinary team of educators coming together to have a meeting on specific students that are extremely at promise or that are consuming a lot of the time of the school officials. And you need to come together to put your brains together to come up with an academic plan, a behavior plan, a social-emotional plan to address some of our students. And recently, I did get involved in a particular case in this district where I called the superintendent, I called the assistant soup, and I was extremely angry, extremely angry about things that had happened to a student in this district and no one, not the principal, not the vice principal, not a counselor, nobody took initiative or responsibility in seeing that a student was at promise, was, you know, dealing with a lot of stuff socially, emotionally, behaviorally, academically. And so a decision was reached by the Director of Student Support Services or Child Welfare and Attendance, and they were going to ship out the student to another school. And I said, "Okay, so you're going to ship out a student to another school? Let me see the SST, the Student Success Team Meeting." Well, you know, a bunch of calls were made, you know, long story short, there was no SST. I said, "Look, Dr. Zuniga, I will never support you or principals or anybody if you know that there was stuff that happened with the student and there's no SST. I am unforgiving about that." Why do I say that? Because ten years ago, when I came onto this board, we created a position. Okay, well, I didn't create the position. It's actually called the Student Support Coordinator Position, but it's known as the Outreach Consultant. It is the only position in education that is listed under Education Code in California. It is known as the Outreach Consultant for Senate Bill 65. It's been around for a long time. I've been in education for thirty years and it was there before I, before I came. It was done by Senator Art Torres and it's a, it's a process of regular education that still works today. It's basically MTSS pre-MTSS. So MTSS is the new name that they give to the different supports that we have in our school system at a Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. I'm very familiar with the multidisciplinary system of support because I, I'm part of a team in my elementary district and I've learned a lot from that. But when we have a student that is having, you know, issues with any of the three As, which is attitude, achievement, and attendance, attitude and achievement, attendance, we all know, you know, I've done attendance for thirty years, it is the first layer that you can peel off the onion. If you tear through attendance, you will get to the real reason of why students are struggling at school, okay? I know it takes like all these different scientific reports, but basically it says, "If students don't come to school, they're not going to do well," or "Students that come to school do better than kids that don't." You know, I think it's kind of moronic to spend all these thousands of dollars in a report. I think we all know that. Are there some exceptions? Yes, there's some exceptions where sometimes kids are so bright and so strong academically, but eventually attendance catches up with them. I know that because I'm a practitioner and I've been around for thirty years and I've seen it, so I know that for a fact. That is my area of expertise. The second A is attitude. When I'm talking about attitude, I'm talking about achievement. If the student is constantly getting in fights and unable to get along well with their peers and there's a lot of conflict, counselors should pick that up, vice principals should pick that up. And our parents will only get the assistance if we walk them through the process. A lot of times, we come from a middle-class approach of, "Oh yeah, just refer him to Foothill Family, just refer him to Pacific Clinics, just refer him to Almanza." Our community doesn't work that way, okay? What happens, two, three, four weeks go by and we're like, "Well, we gave you the information, parent, how come you didn't call?" The reason we hired a comprehensive student support coordinator at each one of our high schools or an outreach consultant, which is the position, the only position in education that has ever been written into ed code, I don't know if you knew that, but the teacher position's not in ed code like this position is, or the vice principal, principal, no position, but that one is. It was created because of those kids that are consuming our time with attendance, that are consuming a time with their attitude or their behavior, that are consuming our time with their achievement. And when I see that, sometimes they'll bring a case to me, and I've said this to Mr. Larry Cecil, I said, "Don't be asking me to support you when you come, you bring something into closed session about a suspended expulsion or that a kid did all these awful things and then when I ask you, where's the SST, where's the Student Success Team Meeting, where you have the initial meeting, you come up with this plan and then in four to six weeks, in the olden day was four to six weeks before you have the follow-up. Now it's a little longer, it's six to seven weeks under MTSS. And there's no follow-up. There's no initial SST, Student Success Team Meeting, there's no follow-up to tell me what, what you guys said the plan was. The follow-up is to tell me, "Well, you said all these wonderful things you guys were going to do, what happened? Who did them? Who's responsible? Where's the accountability? And then was there a follow-up to that follow-up and so on and so forth?" Because if a child's been having problems for a very long time, I don't care how bright the multidisciplinary team is. Once you come together, you get all your heads together, but the problem's not going to change, but it should be getting better and that's why you need follow-ups to the initial meeting and a follow-up to that follow-up. And I know you get it, Mr. Larry Cecil. How do I know that? Because of, over the summer, we contracted Lydia Carswell, who was a field colleague in that department of understanding resiliency and understanding the whole SST process and all of the components of the Pupil Motivation and Maintenance Program grant. And I was very specific, I said, "Make sure that you sent Mr. Alejandro Leon and you make him sit there and watch that presentation." And I was very specific about that because he is the person who gets to work with all of our counselors, all of our principals, all of our schools. And when, recently this parent called me and I asked, "There's no SST." I did call Dr. Zuniga and I said, "Have that meeting and have Mr. Leon sit in on that meeting and I want to see the SST of what you're going to create for this student." Because if it happened to that student, I'm sure it's not the only high school or the one, from this, that this child came from, that it's happening. So you guys, you're the educational person in our district that feel the pulse of where our school district is going, so I'm saying this to you publicly. And again, I am unapologetic about that because if it affects our students and this person had multiple issues with behavior and academics and nobody picked it up, it needs to be said. You know, if it ruffles the feathers with the principals or the assistant principals or the counselors, so be it. I want the feathers ruffled so that this doesn't repeat itself with, with those students. So that's why I would like a presentation of what is the comprehensive student support coordinator? Because if you recall, when we started going into these other positions, they wanted to use the comprehensive student support coordinators to be, you know, assistants or clerks or whatever in these other programs. And I said, "I'm sorry, but I don't play that. I know that program backwards and forward and you're not going to do that." And that's why we had the training as a refresher to all of the comprehensive student support coordinators in the district to make it crystal clear about what their role is, which is to keep specific kids from falling through the cracks. Can they do it all by themselves? No. Well, together with RISE and MTSS, marry it. Because we have enough support, more support than we've ever had with physical bodies on campus. And a teacher said it best today, they don't want programs, they do want the, the physical contact and the relationship that happens, students, teacher-student relationship and adults. So I, I do want a very good presentation about what is happening at the sites. And you know, I don't mean I just want you to give me a beautiful presentation like a dog and pony show. I will respect you more if you tell me, "You know what? We got work to do. There's some cases here that we dropped that we need to get on it." I will respect you more for that rather than you give me this beautiful presentation and nothing's happening with our students, okay? And I know I'm being critical, but you know me, I give you the good, the bad and the ugly. If there's kudos, I'll give it to you. And if there's stuff that needs to be said, I will say it. And yes, Elmani Union High School District is not your typical district, you know, we, it gets uncomfortable here, but it's okay to get uncomfortable if our students are going to get served, so be it. So with that being said, moving, Mr. Ruben Carrasco, do you have anything you'd like to share?
No, nothing.
Okay. Dr. Zuniga, anything else you'd like to share on item one? Do you want?
Just a few items.
Go ahead.
For the Rio Honda, Taste of Rio Honda, last year we sponsored, they're looking for opportunities for sponsorship from partners and last year's partnership was five thousand dollars for the Taste of Rio Honda, which benefits students and scholarships and something that if the board is interested, I can complete that for this upcoming Taste of Rio Honda.
Sure, let's have this discussion. Board Member Carlos Salcedo? The Taste of Rio? Last year, we sponsored them five thousand dollars and he wants to know if we're...
My recommendation is to match what we had last year with the five thousand sponsorship.
Okay. Board Member Florencil Breones?
Yeah, I'm okay with five thousand.
Professor Torres de Seigres?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm okay with that. So, all right, the board has decided we give Rio Honda College five thousand dollars in support of Taste of Rio. And then will you give us the details or reach out to board members on who would like to attend and what it entails? I know you did in the past.
Yeah, we can do that.
Do you have a date?
I sure do. I have it on Friday, June ninth.
June ninth, okay. Just add that to our Friday memo, please?
Yeah, calendar for you guys.
All right. You'll add it to your dates, right?
Yes, sir.
What day of the week is that?
It's Friday.
Friday, okay.
June ninth, Friday, June ninth.
Okay.
I also want to congratulate Mr. Lawrence Cecil on his retirement, which is effective June thirtieth. We already heard the amazing things he's done over the years of his career and we look forward to bragging about him when we get to June. So for now, just a simple congratulations and we're lucky to have you the next couple of months. That said, I also want to wish everyone a safe and restful spring break as we approach the end of the week. I know kids and families usually go out, spend some time together, but I also invite all of you to enjoy and get some rest and also refresh yourself. When we come back, it's a, you know, quick but long haul at the same time we approach the end of the school year. With that, that concludes my remarks and announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to say, Board Member Carlos Salcedo regarding Mr. Larry Cecil? I think we can give it to him now and also when that other time comes as it gets closer. Do you have anything? Just start. Very, very nice words on your part. Board Member Florencil Breones?
Twenty-two years of memories, that's how long I've known Mr. Cecil since I started with the school district as a classified employee. I'm going to reserve my comments for your retirement celebration because otherwise we will be here all night. But I just want to wish you the best in the next step of your life. I know that you're not going to go far because as you've told me countless times, your heart is here in Elmani. So thank you so much, it's well-deserved and, you know, we're going to celebrate.
Thank you, Board Member Florencil Breones. Board Member Professor Torres de Seigres?
How are feeling? But we're very happy, I'm very happy because you are going to finish one of your, you are going to do what you have to do now in your retirement. We have been talking a lot about family and family, our career, our people here is very important, but family has to be first. I'm happy for you because you are going to be with your family. I'm very unhappy because who is going to have that beautiful smile all the time when I get here? And I get here, the truth I have to tell everybody is that when I come here, I get, I'm very, very nervous, very uncomfortable sometimes. And when I see Mr. Larry Cecil, I said, "Everything is going to be okay." Good luck and fulfill your dreams that you want to do in your retirement. Thank you, Mr. Cecil.
Absolutely. Mr. Ruben Carrasco?
Yes, well, I don't know Mr. Cecil for twenty-plus years, but, but you might not remember, but I was, I actually met you four years ago. It was, it was my eighth grade year transitioning to my ninth grade year and I came here with my mom to request a transfer from Elmani High School to South Elmani High School and you were the one to actually sign off on it. You were sitting exactly where you're sitting there now and you signed off on it and, and you asked me why, why I wanted to transfer and I forgot what I told you, right? But you were like, "Oh, you know, you got a bright future, kid." But I don't know, man. It goes, we go back four years and obviously now, you know, your, your son is my teacher and, and it runs in the family. You know, your son's a great guy, more respectfully, my, Mr. Cecil, my teacher, is a great guy. He's awesome and, and obviously I can see he got it from you. And just congratulations. You know, I think at one point, everyone wants to retire and I'm, and I'm glad that you're going to have time with your family now. Congratulations.
Thank you, Board Member Ruben Carrasco. Christine, would you like to share anything?
Well, I've known Larry about almost ten years and it's going to be weird not seeing you around the district anymore. Excuse my sick voice, by the way. I will definitely bring sidecar donuts for your last board meeting. But you've always been such a pleasure for everyone in our office to work with and we're definitely going to miss you.
Thank you, legal counsel. Mr. Robin Torres? You know I'm not going to skip you, Assistant Soup of Personnel, Human Resources.
Mr. Cecil, the celebrating has only just begun. We have a couple more months and a few dates planned, so hang on, it's going to be a great ride.
Thank you. Mr. Whale Elatar?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that this is not going to be the end of Larry Cecil in the district, so I am sure that I will see Larry probably the second or third day after he retires. And, you know, so he's going to be around and I appreciate him a whole lot, so.
Thank you, Mr. Whale Elatar. And you know, as, as Board President of the Elmani Union High School District Board of Education, I kind of cannot thank you enough. I said this to you privately and I'll say it to you publicly, that I have always felt that you kept the pulse and continue to keep the pulse of the instructional program in this district. I know that you're highly respected by teachers, principals and vice principals and always
I know that you're highly respected by teachers, principals, and vice principals, and always so professional, always so bubbly, so charismatic, so willing to do the right thing, and always makes decisions based on our students. And I can't tell you how many times I called you at different times of the night and the day and the morning, and brought a problem to you or a concern from a parent, and your response was always, "We'll take care of it, Mr. Padilla. We'll take care of it, Mr. Padilla." And you always have taken care of our students, and you do it with a smile, just like my colleague Professor Torres de Seigres says. You've always been so warm, so kind, but I totally understand the reason why you're retiring and how you want to be with family, and you're going to be taking care of someone that's very special. And that just speaks to the type of person that you are. You know, you have it in your heart. You're very caring, you're very nurturing, you're very loving, and it's for that reason that we love you here in the Elmani Union High School District. And I want you to know that you will always have an open-door policy here with anybody on this board and anybody in administration. You're always welcome to come back, because I know it's hard to, yeah, you perked up with that, right? You're welcome to come back and help us with different projects. And Dr. Zuniga, please give them the keys to the Elmani Union High School District, and please come back and tell us about, you know, all the wonderful things that, that you're going to be engaging in. And one thing that I know about people who retire, you know, is that you think you're going to have a lot of free time, but what happens is, people that retire are sometimes busier than when they were working. But I wish you the best, my dear friend, and there'll be more words for all of us to share as that time gets closer. But I take my hat off to you. I thank you for putting up with me. You know, it's, it's tough to put up with me, but you handled it with grace, and we're always so respectful of every single one of us board members, and we all have our own ideas and our own requests that we have. And I know my colleague here, Mr. Queen Nuyen, is wearing you out with all the math data that he wants, but I know you love it, because you're a math expert, and you come up with all the data that we want. So thank you, my dear friend, and I wish you the best, and there'll, there'll be more words and more accolades and more stories that we will share before you leave us, okay? Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's tough. This has always been my, my love, this district, the kids. I gotta keep this short. I just love this district, and I love the kids, I love the staff. It will always be home, it's always been home, and it's really tough. It's a tough decision to make.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate all of you guys and your, your kind, kind words. But again, I'm not going to go too far, because anything this district ever need, I will be there for them. I talked to Dr. Zuniga about that. Anything, I'm here. But thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Larry Cecil. And, you know, it didn't, it didn't click on me when the Honorable Hector Delgado was coming up, and, and he got emotional, you know, and it's very vulnerable for, for us men to cry sometimes. It's just, it makes me feel uncomfortable, but that vulnerability, when somebody's vulnerable like that, I know they're speaking from their heart. So I know that, that feeling or that emotion that came upon the Honorable Hector Delgado is that same love that so many people throughout that district have for you, and I'm sure that that emotion will come upon them as well. So that should make you feel good inside that you've done what you've had to do in this world to make it a better place, and you have made Elmani Union High School District a better place, because you touched it at a very high level in controlling so many aspects of our district. So thank you, Mr. Larry Cecil. Appreciate it, yeah. The next item on the agenda is item number two, closed session. It says that the board will reconvene into closed session to address agendas, closed session items that were not addressed at the beginning of the regular meeting. I don't think that there's a need for that, so we'll move on to item number three, a report out from Olivares San Madruga from closed session.
No action taken on the closed session item.
Thank you, legal counsel. At this time, we will adjourn this meeting at 10:15. This was the Board of Education meeting on April 5th. Thank you.